Welcome to the Greater Rutland County Supervisory Union Special Meeting on February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda as presented.
So move.
I'll second it.
Second by Lynette. All those in favor?
Right, right.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We're going to begin with a presentation by the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, which is going to touch upon their survey that was sent to staff and parents. Those of you that wish to speak, if you can put your name in the chat, that would be helpful. So when we start the public comment session, everyone will have an opportunity to speak, to speak one time, and there'll be a two-minute limit for each speaker. There's a lot of people on the call or in the meeting, so putting your name in the chat will give us an opportunity to be able to call you. And there won't be any, any, no one will be missed that wishes to speak. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Lisa and to Chris.
Thanks, Lisa. Give me one second to get the presentation up. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. First of all, I want to thank you all for coming tonight's, uh, staff and community members. I know that this week is not ideal for many due to the February break, but felt as important to provide our community an opportunity to, uh, to share their inputs and concerns with regard to masking in our schools. I also wanted to thank all of you who took the time to, uh, you know, take our survey on masking while we are well aware of the strong opinions and feelings that exist in our communities around masking. We do appreciate the candor and the feedback. Uh, in a little bit, Lisa Madison, Will, our GRCSU assistant superintendent, sorry, will be sharing the survey results with the board and those that have joined us this evening. This has been a challenging year, to say the least. Uh, many of you have expressed your concerns and frustrations with our COVID mitigation measures since the beginning of the year. Uh, it's, it's been unique in the fact that, uh, we've, we've heard a lot of individuals, uh, request that we follow the science. And this is individuals on both sides of the table, that, uh, there were many individuals that have felt that our measures have been not stringent enough, that we should have been doing more. Uh, there are others who have felt that it's been a strong overreach, that we should be doing less. And so it's been a unique balance, to say the least, uh, you know, with this. And so, uh, you know, I've said this since the beginning, uh, that I'm not a medical expert. I've never claimed to be a medical, medical expert. Uh, that I've done a lot of research, I've done a lot of reading, I think, you know, very familiar with, uh, you know, this pandemic slash endemic and COVID nineteen, but, uh, I do not feel that the, the research or the time that I've done, or, you know, whether it be YouTube video has qualifies me as an expert. And I think as we have, you know, kind of aligned ourselves with, uh, the AOE and the Department of Health, uh, we, that's been our plan from the get-go, is that this is kind of where we're going, that, uh, with, as we set our mitigation measures, we set our approach. We, like I said, we follow the recommendation, the guidance from AOE, Department of Health. We also looked at the American Association of Pediatrics and the CDC as well. Um, and I know that's been frustrating for a lot, uh, you know, that with that, you know, but like I said, it has not been a decision that myself or our administrators have been making personally. This is a decision that we made back in the spring of two thousand and twenty that we were going to align ourselves with, uh, the AOE Department of Health. Uh, we have not deviated from those recommendations. Uh, our current recommendation that we have in place, and you may have heard that, uh, Governor Scott and Secretary French referenced this back on February fifteenth during their press conference. Uh, I just need to admit a bunch of people on, okay? Uh, is, as of February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, uh, masks would no longer be required for all those eligible for vaccination when the vaccination rate, as defined as two doses of a two-dose vaccine among students is equal to or greater than eight percent of the school's currently eligible population. This is currently what we are following here at the GRCSU. Uh, this is what we are looking to open our schools with, uh, right now, uh, after the February break. But as we look at the next slide, uh, you can see that our current GRCSU vaccination rates, uh, we have one school which is close to the eighty percent threshold, that is Rutland Town. It's seventy-five, but, uh, and we have other schools. And this is not a, uh, condemnation, this is just merely just for, you know, reference. Uh, because as you look at eighty percent, uh, you know, all along, uh, myself, Lisa, our admins, our boards have taken a very hands-off approach, where the fact that we've been very respectful of, uh, our communities, our, uh, their decision-making around this, that's the fact that we've, we know that they're very strong, uh, opinions and convictions in terms of those who feel they want their, uh, their, their children to be vaccinated and those that don't. And we've been respectful of that. And, uh, and I think we were going to continue with that. This is merely just meant to show that as we look at the state's current recommendation of eighty percent, which we do anticipate will change. Um, as of right now, uh, none of our schools would be allowed to open under that. We also, from a realistic standpoint, know that, uh, those individuals who felt strongly in, uh, in favor of vaccination have been vaccinated, those who felt strongly against vaccination have not been vaccinated. So therefore, we don't see the needle moving too much, uh, for, in some of our schools. So we also are waiting for, uh, state-verified immunization data, which may impact our results a little bit, uh, but we're not going to see a big bump. For some of our schools that are, uh, well off, like I said, Rutland Town may, uh, because of the state verified data, may see that they bump up past eighty percent. But some of our schools, uh, that, that, I said, we won't see that significant of a jump. We may even see just a bit of a decline with that, but, um, that, that's kind of where we're at with the, the data. So I just want to present that to you. The question that we asked and asked, uh, a lot is, is why we're attaining a possible shift to a mask optional policy in our schools? In Governor Scott's press conference on February fifteenth, uh, he did announce an end to a mask recommendation in schools. And that's kind of what we just referenced, the eighty percent, uh, February twenty-eighth. As we look at moving forward, um, I, we've seen a lot of, uh, SUs, we've seen a lot of moves nationally, you know, regionally, where we, you know, see a lot of states are looking to drop their mask mandates. We've seen, you know, schools do this. We, we have seen a regional, uh, Supervisory Union in Slate Valley, which I know as, they made the announcement before break. Many of you emailed me to let me know, uh, what was going on and whether or not we're going to follow suit. Uh, and we also are aware that many SUs and school districts, both regionally as well as statewide, are currently having these same discussions, whether it be, uh, in a community forum such as we're doing tonight or behind closed doors. But, uh, with, uh, all SUs and districts are starting to begin to look at this endemic approach in terms of this, this shift from, uh, in our schools and what we're going to do about this. In addition, we've recently seen our, our governor and administration officials, uh, point to improving trends and, uh, diminishing daily case reports and falling numbers of hospitalizations in, uh, both in Vermont and the region as signals that conditions should be favorable to have schools no longer require masking doors. And that's also where the eighty percent comes in right now. The vast majority of students are vaccinated. We also have a couple of things. The antiquated benchmark, uh, this is something which you're going to start to see. Uh, I know that Slate Valley had discussed this. Other SUs, districts have discussed as well. This eighty percent benchmark was set back in August. This was pre-Delta, pre-pediatric vaccine, pre-Omicron. Uh, so this was set a while back. It was a, what we believe to be an arbitrary number, uh, at the time. Uh, we do anticipate that within, uh, a, a, a short time that we may see this number change. And we may see a decline. We may see the number go away altogether within the next week or two. Um, so it just really depends on what happens post-break. Uh, but, you know, we do have, like I said, a lot of schools have taken issue with this eighty percent. And I know that's, there has been a discussion about, uh, you know, the, you know, this, this eighty percent of numbers, you know, who are vaccinated, but also we do have a large number of our students who have had COVID. Uh, you know, we've seen the Omicron had, uh, surged through our communities. And we had a large number of our students and community members who had Omicron and were able to return to school successfully. So, but right, currently right now, the state is not taking that into consideration. They're just looking at a, a vac, vaccination rate. Uh, we do anticipate the shift to mask optional recommendations from the state, it's on the way soon. Uh, I know that we have our weekly phone, uh, uh, conference calls with Secretary French. Uh, we've seen signaling in our, uh, the, the governor's, uh, press conferences on Tuesday. Uh, you know, Secretary French has asked us to, you know, you know, superintendents to begin to prepare our, uh, districts or supervisor unions for this shift to an endemic approach. Uh, that is, it's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And he didn't say that, you know, we're looking to do something in March. Uh, so it is on the way, but like I said, it's, it's, we don't necessarily know when that's going to occur. We also seen rescommunication from the VPA regarding state playoffs, in which the, the, particularly the boys and girls' basketball, uh, state championships were to be held at UVM and at, uh, the, uh, the odd up in Berry, uh, that the players and coaches and officials will not be required to wear masks for both the semifinals and the finals, uh, which, uh, to me is a, uh, kind of a a, a signal of things to come. The fact that as we are starting to, you know, shift our, our student athletes, particularly where sports has always been a, a, a cause for concern over the past two years. And here we are in the, in state championships, kind of where this all began, uh, two years ago, that, uh, the VPA has taken a stance in which they are, you know, relaxing masking for our, uh, our boys and girls that play in the state playoffs, as well as others, uh, you know, championships as well. As I said before, the current vaccination rates in some of our GRCSU, uh, GRCSU schools indicate that realistically, we may not reach an eighty percent school-age vaccination rate in those communities. And I think that's just not here in the GRCSU. I think we're seeing that statewide, that uh, we are seeing trends while you might see, let's say, in Chittenden or some schools in, say, Addison County, but uh, statewide, we are seeing a lot of our, uh, schools and supervisor unions are not, uh, really touching eighty percent. And I think it's, uh, when they talk about a state number, it is a bit distorted because if you look at how our population is distributed across the state. Um, you know, but when we look at some of our more rural areas, you know, we, we're not going to have eighty percent. And that's just the, the current reality. And so if we looked at this right now, if we're eighty percent, summer schools, we may be in eighty percent, you know, through the end of the year. Um, and that's just, like I said, something for us to discuss tonight. As I said before, other SUs across the state are in the same conversation about when to shift to a mask optional recommendation in our schools. Uh, many SUs and districts are positioning themselves to move to a mask optional policy by mid-March. Uh, I have had communication, even my daughter's district, uh, that they are, you know, doing a mid-March shift to mask optional. I know in conversations with other superintendents that there have been discussions about, uh, you know, whether it be March fourteenth or, and, uh, March seventh, it's Slate Valley. Uh, I think a lot of SUs are really just kind of waiting to see what happens after this break. And then I'm sure we will see more information from Secretary French moving forward, but we are going to see a lot of movement probably the next week or two from a lot of districts, uh, with this, you know, mask optional policy in terms of where they're going to be heading next. And we are going to see some districts who, um, and that's kind of what we're talking about here is, you know, I mean, I'll, I'll pause it for a second, let me get to Dr. Levine. I just want to bring this up, that on Tuesday's press conference, uh, Dr. Levine did sit there and talk and, and said, "The state continues moved into an endemic posture where we live and manage COVID. This will be a strategy that is based on how we all have different levels of risk, and we need to navigate them and manage precautions in our way at our own pace. Considering our individual risk will become part of our own decision-making." Uh, you know, I think that, you know, when Dr. Levine, you know, having these discussions, starts, you know, making these statements really is looking more from a, 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 like a, an institutional decision to more an individual decision. I think that's what we're seeing with, you know, with this endemic approach, whether it be shifting tests, uh, test to state to a test to home, and whether or not we, we see a shift in next week or two with ma, uh, mask, masking policy. We are going to see the state and look at if, if our current, you know, the trend continues and, you know, downwards trend, we will see that, uh, you know, Dr. Levine and, and other state officials will be looking at more. It'll be the individuals responsible to weigh their risk and how they can, you know, mitigate that on their own. It won't necessarily be a part of a, you know, a state or a, uh, school district. Uh, and then also, you know, the big concern is about whether or not as individuals make the choice to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. Uh, one of the things that I've, I've experienced in the past is the fact that, when, if you walk into a store, uh, you will see people who are, who are wearing masks, people who are not wearing masks. And, uh, the one thing I've always been very, uh, you know, I've appreciated about Vermont, as opposed to, say, when I went to Illinois for winter break, is Vermonters, you know, if you're wearing a mask, you're not wearing a mask. They, everyone just kind of minds their own business. No one says, you know, things. So people have it very respectful. And I think that is, whether it's, you know, after break, whether it's in a couple of weeks. Uh, I think one of the things that is, you know, concerned is just the fact that we have to be, make sure we are respectful of an individual's decision to wear a mask or not to wear a mask. And that's something which is, from a school perspective and a SU perspective, we're going to have to make sure that we, uh, do our best to, uh, you know, protect staff members as well as students, you know, just, you know, and their individual rights as well. I did, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, you know, I put this on hold for a second, but, um, Secretary French, back in February fifteenth, did state that, uh, and he clarified this, and this is something which a lot of our superintendents have picked up on, but that state officials are simply making a policy recommendation. He's beginning to soften his stance. And schools can still choose to require masking regardless of the vaccination percentages. And this can go one of two ways. Uh, I think is, is, as, you know, SUs and boards are starting to look at the fact that, uh, this idea of choice around masking. But we're also going to see, you know, as, uh, schools are dropping mask optional, or if they're at eighty percent, some school districts and some boards may choose to keep masking in place. That, uh, even though they are at, say, eighty percent or ninety percent, there may be some schools or some districts or some boards who make that decision to, uh, keep masking in place. And I, I think you're going to see as Secretary French and Governor Scott has said, it's more of that local decision. And I think that's something, once again, that this board needs to consider as well as, uh, just what these decisions will be, or, you know, as, you know, the state pivots and shifts as well. The, another question I received a lot, you know, after the survey, uh, from a lot tonight, I, I do want to thank those of you who, uh, emailed me personally. I think, you know, uh, for the most part, people have been very respectful. Uh, like I said, I understand the emotion, I understand the anger. I think, you know, I see it my own, uh, my own, you know, uh, own family, whether, you know, be like, like cousins or relatives, uh, you know, in terms of, you know, strong feelings when we're in another. Um, but people are asked, well, why wait? You know, what's the purpose of waiting? So if, if the board tonight would recommend, uh, that, uh, uh, we would look at going mask optional, whether it be, you know, March first, March seventh, March fourteenth, March twenty-first, whatever day it may be, what's the point in waiting? And I think when we take a look at, you know, the, the, the reason and the rationale behind a wait period and what you're seeing, say, like at Slate Valley, why they're waiting, you know, uh, till March seventh, or some other districts are looking at that March fourteenth deadline, is there are a lot of logistics around this. It's not just, you know, uh, you know, from a family perspective, and as a father, it's just, it's real simple. Tell my daughter, "Okay, hey, you know what? You don't have to wear a mask. If you want to wear a mask, great. If you don't want to wear a mask, okay." I mean, you know, it's fine. But from a school-based perspective, there're just, there're, there're a lot of planning that we have to do. We have to really look at how best to support all of our students as we make that transition back to a mask ops approach. For some of our students, uh, you know, particularly our younger kids, they'd never been in a school where it has been mask optional. So masks have always been a part of their life. And as we look at, you know, working with classroom teachers, and, and I say this enough, our classroom teacher's been a phenomenal throughout this whole process. And I think it's, is, um, you know, we'll share a little bit later in the survey, some of the thoughts, and hopefully some of the staff members on tonight can share some of their, you know, their thoughts and concerns and around this. But, uh, I think our staff, whatever, you know, whatever direction we decide to take tonight, uh, will do the best with, with supporting our kids and make sure that they, they get back to where they are. Because I think at heart of hearts, our staff, you know, they care of a lot of our kids and want to make sure that everyone's kids receives a high-quality education. They just want to do what's best for our kids. And I appreciate that. But like I said, there are a lot of logistics. We have to work with uh, our Director of Student Supports, Christine Cam, and Assistant Director, uh, Kim Steadman, uh, just on supporting them and what that may look like for, uh, for some of our uh, students, whether it be an IEP or five oh four. Um, we also have to allow for, you know, give ourselves time to respond to cases or vacation that have a carryover effect. In the past, we have seen a bit of a bump or an increase in some of our cases after break. That's just natural. People travel, people tend to, you know, uh, you, you know, go to different states, you go to, you know, some people, you know, travel out of the country. Uh, people come back and, you know, may have contracted, you know, COVID. And I think the best thing for us is just to really kind of take a look at and see, you know, in that week, just to, you know, see what, what, what situations look like in our schools. Not necessarily is that's going to impact, you know, our decision, but I think it's just important for us to, uh, have that opportunity to kind of respond and just, uh, you know, you know, just make, make, uh, make plans accordingly. Uh, along the lines of planning, again, we talked before about how best to support all students and decision-making. Uh, that's going to be important. You know, I talked before about Secretary French said this as well, is we just want to make sure that we maintain it and foster culture, which all students and it should say staff as well, feel safe in making a decision. Uh, I know that I read in a newspaper the other day that, uh, a superintendent, I don't know if I can say which superintendent, but a superintendent had, uh, made a statement about, uh, whether people felt that if, you know, someone made a, a choice to mask or not to mask and, uh, around whether or not they cared or didn't care about students. I, I don't think that's the case. I think, you know, every one of our community members cares deeply about both their children, about the, you know, other kids as well. And I think it's one of those where we have to make sure that, you know, in our schools and our communities, that we, you know, if, if a child, whether it be, like I said, in two weeks, three weeks, you know, one week, whatever that is, when we move to mask optional, or staff member chooses to wear a mask or not to wear a mask, that we're respectful, supportive, just as we would have been, you know, prior to this pandemic. Uh, but that's important for us to really look at how, you know, you know, do wrap around supports, because as much as we, you know, as easy as we may think it might be, uh, there will be some individuals who still will have to, you know, you know, have, have a bit of transition going from wearing a mask all day long to not wearing a mask, and what that, what that's like. Uh, and last is just planning for families. We do understand that for some families, uh, you know, a mask optional, whether it be now or in May or in, in June or even next fall, uh, might be very difficult. Uh, we, we do know that there are a lot of unique uh, situations. I know that, uh, you know, many people have said, "We just got to go back and learn to live with," uh, you know, you know, COVID. And, uh, you know, like I said, I think that's, sometimes I, I, I don't want to be flipping with that statement because of, you know, I think every family situation is unique. And I think it's very difficult and challenging. While for one family, it might be easier to shift back to that and say, "Okay, we'll just go back to that." Well, there's might be a little more difficult to, you know, someone whose, uh, mother had cancer and, you know, passed away from cancer. I know that's, um, you know, this would have been a concern for, you know, my family, but we would also, you know, we were mitigating a risk five years ago, uh, you know, with just a common cold or common flu. And I think it's the same sort of thing now. So I think it's just, it is a very personal decision, but we have to make sure we, we, we work with families who, uh, who may explore homeschool option or VT, VLC, uh, or some, you know, something along those lines. But, uh, like I said, there is a lot of planning for us to do, um, rather than just dropping masks. Uh, at this point, I want to turn it over to Lisa Madison, who's going to kind of go through some of the survey results with you. So, and Lisa, I'll just take your cue when you want me to switch to slides, okay?
Great. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate that. Um, thank you, everyone. Good evening. Um, I'm going to just sort of walk us through some of the survey results. Um, you'll see in the next slide, um, we had, uh, many, many participants. This is probably, um, the highest percentage of people um, that have ever responded to one of our surveys, um, both, uh, staff and community members. Um, so obviously, we can't share every single comment, um, in a, a forum like this. Um, but we did try to, uh, get a, a comprehensive summary of the results for everyone, um, and what we thought was a, a pretty representative sample of some of the opinions and points of view that were represented um, in the data. And I'm just going to talk through and read through some of that information for the group. Um, so our family survey, we had five hundred and thirty-one responses. Um, of those, sixty-six point one percent um, said that they would like it to be mask optional for all students and staff, um, with no qualifiers. Um, an, an additional sixteen point nine percent, um, said that they would like it to be mask optional whenever we reach the eighty percent vaccination rate. And just to be clear, we had not previously shared the school vaccination rates with either our community members or our staff. So people did not have that information, um, handy when they were completing this survey. Um, and then an additional sixteen point nine percent, um, wanted to keep, um, that our current, uh, current protocols in place. Um, for, in terms of timing, when people thought we should do a shift to a mask optional approach, uh, fifty-six point three percent said right after February break, a week or so after February break. Um, then we had seventeen point one percent who said whenever the AOE or Vermont Department of Health recommendations change. An additional fourteen point seven percent said whenever the school reaches the eighty percent vaccination rate. And eleven point nine percent said after April break. Um, here are some of the comments. Uh, I know they are hard to read and some people are on the phone, so, um, I am, I'm going to just read through them. Thank you for your patience. Um, uh, one was, "My children will be masked regardless, and I do not think the mandate should be lifted until all are eligible to be fully vaccinated. That includes the six months to four years of age population." Uh, that would be our preschool students would be those in that group. Um, "It's about time to live our, let our kids live a normal life again. After all, that's why we vaccinated." Another, "I think at this time, mask should be decided by parents for children and that we should remove the mandate immediately." Another, "Realistically, we will not get to eighty percent. I suggest it be recommended to families that if they travel or visit a crowded indoor public setting, that they send their students to school with masks just for the week after travel. I also recommend that families send students to school with masks if they have minor cold symptoms, but test negative for COVID nineteen." Another, "I have concerns for kids who are unable to be vaccinated or are immunocompromised and could be severely affected by COVID. There should be protocols in place to protect them while allowing them to be in school." Another comment, "What do you think is the right timing for a shift to mask optional? Now." And we have more. "I truly feel that masks should have been optional this whole time. Those that feel they need the extra protection can wear them." Um, another, "Nothing in the past two years has upset my two children more than learning that masks may no longer be required in schools. They have legitimate concerns over the unvaccinated children and staff attending their school. Why are there no ramifications for the students and families who refuse to get vaccinated? Tell the unvaccinated people that if they want to attend school in person, their kids have to be vaccinated by a certain date. But no, instead, let's punish all the parents and students who are doing the right things to keep themselves safe." Another comment, "I truly feel that masks should have been optional this whole time. Those that feel they need the extra protection can wear them. Children should not be forced to wear masks, and the cloth masks that children are generally wearing don't even adhere to the CDC recommendations anyway." Another, "If you don't have to wear a mask in all sorts of other places, including stadiums full of people, then our kids don't have to wear them at school." This is our last page of family comments. "At some point, schools need to accept that COVID will never go away. You have to start treating it like you would any other cold. Let's be honest as well. All of these kids are hanging out after school and on weekends not wearing masks. So them wearing them in school really isn't doing anything. When the second they walk out the door, they are together anyway. We have to go back to normal." Another, "These kids aren't even wearing them right half the time, and they're getting expensive with four kids needing a new one every day. Time to go back to normal, please." Another, "Case rates are still high. Omicron is easily transmitted, and we've come this far and sacrificed too much to give up before we reach the finish line. Please keep the masks until the end of the school year. Masks mostly protect others. So even if those who are more vulnerable wear an optional mask, the community will not be protecting them, and they will still be at risk." Another, "People act as if wearing a mask is a serious inconvenience, but I think of all the sacrifices Americans have made in the past, and this pales in comparison." And finally, "The eighty percent vaccination rate is such an arbitrary percentage. What is it actually linked to that makes it the standard rate to reach?" So moving on to our staff survey, we had two hundred and eighty responses. That's also a very significant percentage of our staff. Um, forty-seven point one percent, um, wanted to shift to mask optional for all students and staff. Twenty-seven point five, uh, wanted to shift to max mask optional when we reach the eighty percent rate. And twenty-five point four percent wanted to remain with the current protocol. And again, asking them about timing for the shift, uh, forty percent thought after April break. Sixteen point eight percent thought whenever the recommendations from the AOE and VDH change. Um, eighteen point nine thought after April break, um, and twenty-four point three thought whenever the school reaches the eighty percent vaccination rate. And some of the comments from our staff, again, I'm going to read those. Thank you for your patience. Um, "I think these are hard questions to answer. We don't yet know what the status will be after February or April break, what other protocols would be in place, just dropping the mask mandate and all other safety precautions." Another, "I know that there are risks with ending masking, but I think that the stress and fatigue from constant vigilance is taking a toll on students and staff alike. I think that ending masking would have a net positive effect on our overall health and well-being." Another, "As states around the country are dropping their mask mandate, keeping one in place in the GRCSU is going to make it an even bigger hot-button issue. While handling those issues at a school board meeting can be disruptive to that meeting, they are becoming a daily disruption in classrooms because parents are telling students that they shouldn't have to wear them anymore. Students have suffered significant learning losses throughout the pandemic. Increasing disciplinary issues over masks will only lead to more learning loss." Another, "I think it may still be too early to tell. Why not stick with it throughout the school year since we are all used to it and start fresh in the fall if all is well?" "It's time to remove the masks. Most masks here are not the kind that will protect, and they are often not worn properly. It will boost morale and help relationships." Another, "I just feel much more confident after we can start opening the windows for ventilation." Another, "After winter sports would be a great time to change the masking requirements." Another, "Mask should be optional. No one should be forced to wear masks. Schools are the only place requiring people to wear them." Another, "Can we require unvaccinated students or staff to wear masks?" Another, "I feel that masks are not doing what they are supposed to. Everyone, vaccinated or not, boosted or not, are getting COVID. Some people getting..." Some people getting COVID that are vaccinated and boosted have got COVID twice. I feel everyone just needs to do their job regarding their health and body. We can't live this way forever. We need to get back to some normal, normalcy for the kids and for ourselves. Another, I am high risk and hope you will remember that other teachers are as well. And our final page of staff comments, given that I frequently work with students in small, poorly ventilated rooms, I will continue to wear a mask regardless. Another, please wait until the nice spring weather when windows can be open. Working with populations that cannot receive the vaccination at this time and some who choose not to puts them at risk. Another, I feel the mandates have been keeping everyone as safe as they can. The numbers decrease when we follow the guidelines. I would prefer to keep the current guideline until vaccinations have reached a higher percentage and the numbers have continually decreased for a longer period of time. And our final comment, we need to switch the responsibility from schools to families. The death rate among positive and vaccinated individuals is low and symptoms are milder. One, despite our very best efforts, mask compliance is now a daily challenge for staff and administrators to enforce. Two, masks are not being worn by the overwhelming majority of individuals outside of school. Three, COVID will be with us indefinitely. We cannot predict the length nor intensity of the virus as it changes throughout the United States or Vermont. Four, additionally, our students would benefit socially, emotionally from mask removal. Some of our students have never been in school with the ability to see their classmates' faces or their teachers. That concludes our survey responses. I think as you can see from, from the comments and the, the ratings, um, really th- there's a wide range of perspectives and opinions as there has been, um, throughout this entire pandemic experience. Um, and so we hope that getting to actually hear some of the words and language used by some of our survey responses and some of the different topics that they raised um, in their questions and comments, um, will help to give you the kind of wider scope of the thoughts and feelings of the people represented in the GRCSU. And with that, I'm going to just turn it back over to you, Chris, for any final comments and questions.
No, I think you summed it up nicely. So Lisa, turn it back over to the board or if they have any questions, Lisa and I will be more happy to answer any questions.
Sure. I'm going to ask the board to hold questions till after we hear from our public. I think, um, a- after we hear from everyone, the board can hold discussion, but I'd, I'd just like to wait and we have lots of people on and they've sat through our presentation. So I have, um, a number of people that have signed up and I'm just going to call you the way you signed up in the chat. Um, and the first person is Skylar Banay.
Benoit, it's okay. Um, hi, I am a mother of a three-year-old that goes to the Children's Center in Proctor. Um, and the few things I wanted to just cover mo- mainly with my concern with the mask mandates is that my child's three, so this is the most important time for her to really rely on expressions from teachers and classmates. They need to feel the warmth and the compassion of them. And I'm, I don't know how this can be done with faces being covered. Um, teachers can no longer read expressions on children's faces or see that they're frustrated, worried, upset, happy, et cetera. And our children aren't forming strong relationships with the teachers nor the classmates this academic, academic year. Um, it's really hard to understand children in masks, especially when it's not in a one-on-one setting, which leads to frustration from the children, um, and teachers and caregivers, which can result in the lack of response to short-term needs. Um, many needs are time-sensitive, such as I have to go to the bathroom and children three, ages three to five are still getting accustomed to using that bathroom timely and in the child scare, um, school setting. Um, I also kind of wanted to go over, um, the World Health Organization and UNICEF stating that children ages five and under should not be required to wear masks. Um, it's based on the safety and overall interest of the child and the capacity to appropriately use a mask with minimal assistance. The group has also advised against masks for older children when physically active. They shouldn't wear masks when playing sports or doing physical activities such as running, jumping, playing or on the playground. So it doesn't compromise their breathing. For children ages six to 11, masks are recommended in classrooms, but only if the school is in a loc- locality with widespread transmission. And then only after consulting with parents and weighing in on the potential impact of learning, um, and psychosocial development, um, is where it really comes down to. Um, my other thing is that the mask that I have to put my child in states on the back of it that it's not intended for medical use and does not protect against transmission. So I'm finding a very big circle of contradicting, um, information, you know, come to me and my child. Um, and so those are some of my biggest concerns. Um, my other, my last thing would be that, you know, my child will sit in a, the same classroom that she has to wear a mask all day, except for when she's taking, she's eating breakfast or she's eating a snack or she's having her lunch. They're still right next to each other with no masks. And then they go outside and they play with their teachers and their friends and their physical with no masks, but then have to go back inside and play with their masks on. And because they can't wear them properly and they're constantly touching their face, then it leads to more germs than what they'd really be doing if they just wiped their noses, you know? Um, those are my really biggest issues. Um, I kind of just don't know where the, the line is drawn on where it makes sense, um, for my, my child to, you know, wear that mask. I mean, we are told that, you know, we should be the, um, we should be the, um, we, we should be the people, uh, the parents or the caregivers should be the people to reassure our children that nothing's lurking in the dark, that we, there's not monsters hiding under a bed. And the masks, I feel, are encouraging our children to live in a constant state of fear. We're frightening them into believing that they're being stalked by germs that everyone is carrying, including themselves. And we're teaching them that we need to cover our face to be polite and to show manners. But further with the CDC guidance resulting in a removal of mask man- mandates for vaccinated adults, we're opposing our leading by example strategy, removing masks for adults but not children. How can we answer them as to why we're being punished for not being vaccinated when vaccinations aren't even an option for them? I just want the option to be able to make the safety and health choices for my child, along with anyone making those choices for their children.
Thank you. The only comment I want to share with you, and I, I, I don't want to comment after people is that you said your child attends Sunshine. That is not a s- a school that is within the SU. So a decision that is made here this evening will not impact, um, a decision at that preschool. So I just want to be clear on that.
Well, I'm sorry. I get your guys' emails and it's through.
No, no, that's fine.
Proctor Elementary, so.
No, I, I, I just don't want you to walk away with thinking a decision made here is going to be a decision in that facility. We don't have any jurisdiction over that.
Thank you.
But thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate that. Uh, the next person I have is Nate Carr.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah. Nate, can you just tell us what, um, community you're from?
Yes, I'm a father of four students of Middletown Springs Elementary School.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll do my best to be brief. Uh, I think tonight we are talking about two related but separate things and I'd like to address them separately. The first thing that we're talking about is mandates. So apart, totally apart from how you feel about masks, mandates themselves are something we need to think about. Children and staff are always going to be allowed and able to wear a mask if they feel comfortable doing so. So a mandate is inherently this. A mandate is forcing our neighbors to force their children to wear a mask when they do not believe that it is in their best interests. So how high should the threshold for truth and proof and effectiveness be to force someone to do something that they do not believe is good for their children? So I submit that there are two things that need to be true for a mandate on children. First, the potential harm has to be severe. Severe. And the second thing is that the protection or the benefit of the mandated action must be clear and proven. And mask mandates have failed both of these basic requirements. First, the potential for serious harm from COVID on elementary kids. Per the CDC, as of February 16th, five to 14-year-old children, 255 children have died with COVID over two years. That's from, not from COVID, it's with COVID and it's not taking into account comorbidities. Now, every single death is a tragedy, but we have to put this in perspective. There are 41 million children in the United States in that age range. That means that over a two-year pandemic that rocked our country, there was a point 0006% chance, six ten thousandths of one percent chance of your child dying from COVID. Statistically speaking, COVID is not a threat to our elementary school kids. Compare that level of risk to this. There are more than 200,000 playground injuries that send kids to the hospital every year. There are 14 deaths every year in the United States in that age or age range for playground injuries, but we still have playgrounds and we should. So the second thing, clear and proven protection. In the CDC study, February 4th, Edition 71, 6, page 212, this is paragraph six from the CDC. Wearing a cloth mask was associated with lower adjusted odds of a positive test compared with never wearing a face covering, but was not statistically significant. Cloth masks, the masks that most of our kids are wearing, do not provide a statistically significant pers- protection. So COVID is not an incredible danger to our kids. Two years in, we now know that. And the masks that we're wearing are not statistically effective. On it, on its own, all by itself, that means we should not be mandating masks. They should be an option we can choose, but they have failed to rise to the level of mandating. But beyond that, masks are not neutral. For many of our children, they are actually a significant negative. So often I hear things like, what's the big deal? It's just a mask. It's not a big thing to ask. That is false. Again, according to the CDC, in 2020, mental health-related emergency room visits for 12 to 17-year-old children increased 31% year over year. Teen female suicide rates were up 50% in February and March compared to pre-COVID levels. We have seen this in our own students. I have seen this in my own children's lives, all four of them. Masking is affecting their development. It's affecting their self-confidence. It's affecting their ability to interact with others in public. And you know, in one way, masking is like everything else. Some kids handle it better than others. So for those who say this is not a big deal for my kids, they're taking it in stride. Absolutely. For some kids, this is not a big deal. But some kids have a huge impact on their life. And just like so often, those who are most impacted are those that already have other challenges that they're dealing with. And it's the parents and the families that are in the best position to determine which group their children is in. So we are wearing statistically insignificant masks, very imperfectly. We're getting all the negative side effects and there are significant side effects with no benefit. And even worse, we're forcing our neighbors to force their kids to do it. And there is no longer any higher authority forcing us to do this. There's no state of emergency. There's no governor. You have the power to fix this and I'm asking you to fix it now. And finally, I'll, I'll stop with this, but parents have been stripped of their ability to decide for their own children what is healthiest, what is safest and what is best for them? We've been objecting for two years. So I think unfortunately, we have to use whatever sway and whatever voice we have. So I am asking all parents and all community members of the GRCSU to vote no on every school budget until the mandates are stopped. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. James Kent.
Hello, uh, James Kent, Rutland Town School. I have two sons that attend there. Um, you know, ho- honestly, this entire conversation's been so disheartening. I don't, I kind of lost a lot of my vigor to, to say much. Um, you know, again, I've heard a lot of things tonight. I, I, what I don't hear, and I, and I'm really only coming and speaking for what seems like now the majority of people that kind of have, uh, the understanding of what this virus really is about, um, and actually understand some of the science behind it. I don't hear a lot of science being talked about in this conversation today. I've actually heard some, uh, false equivalencies that have kind of start that lumping in of that COVID is the same as the common cold and the flu, which is completely false. Um, I've heard, I, I just heard a whole spiel that, uh, kind of came from that urgency of normal, uh, toolkit that's been going around. Um, I mean, there seems to be this movable force to just get everybody back to this sense of normal. Um, which again, that is, that itself is false. And I think this is a train that's already left the station. Um, and if I had my way, I think we would keep the mask on for the rest of the year. Um, that's clearly not going to happen. Uh, but you know, I'm affiliated with the Rutland Town, uh, the hospital. Uh, my wife works there. She has seen COVID in a way that obviously a lot of the parents haven't seen. Um, which, you know, fair or unfair, it gives me a window into what the reality is and what happens when we don't take the virus seriously. Um, and just thinking about, you know, we talk about anxiety and, uh, uh, pressure that, uh, the hospital's been under and seeing that firsthand the past couple of years. And that feeling of being let down, I think from the hospital and the staff when they try so hard and people just don't seem to get it. I mean, I, I looked at that slide that Chris put up and showing the, the real vaccination rates, at least from that survey. I mean, that was horrifying. Um, I mean, it, it, and it kind of aligns with something that, uh, again, I think is, is incorrect when, uh, when Chris was mentioning Vermont Department of Health, that, that the recommendations, I don't know, at some point might have been 80%, but that's not really, uh, the full story of what the Vermont Department of Health has. Because now they really consider what full vaccination is, is not only two shots for five to 11, but, uh, a booster for kids 12 to 17 who would qualify. And that's what they count as actual rates. And if you look at the rates for Vermont, uh, that everybody who's supposed to have all the shots they're supposed to have, i- i- it's, it's frighteningly low. Um, you're never going to get to 80%, which is what, uh, Chris was saying. Um, and, and it's horrible. And, and I mean, again, unlike the, the gentleman who just spoke, um, I, you know, I'm a, I'm very much, uh, against the anti-vax, uh, anti-mask movement, um, especially where there's no science behind the anti-vax. It's all personal beliefs and, you know, we're, we're, we're all fighting something where 900,000 people in the country have been killed. And, and I know there's a lot of people get it a- and don't. And we live in a state that we're lucky that only 500 of those 900,000 um, have died. Um, that's very low. Uh, we've done a lot of the right things, but you know, it was only five weeks ago that the, the school, our school had to shut down because of all the people that were out sick with this thing. And of course, it does make sense because people are out gathering during their vacations, socializing. That's how you get it. And yes, kids thankfully is shown that it has not been that, uh, dangerous for them. However, they bring it home to their families. That's how the virus spreads. I don't think people seem to understand or grasp how it works. So basically what we're saying is in a week or two, or maybe just, uh, coming Monday, our kids are going to go to school. And you got to bet, better believe, if you didn't care about wearing a mask, you're not going to wear it now then, once you don't have to. And certainly if you didn't care enough to get a vaccine, you're certainly not going to wear the mask. So our kids are going to go to school, sitting side by side with people who, whether it's because of their, the parents or whatever, didn't care enough about this virus and then I'm going to put my kid at risk. So yeah, I'm, I'm angry about that. I'm angry that we kowtow to people who don't really understand science, don't care, want to come up with whatever belief they have to get a shot that was so easy to get that my 10-year-old couldn't wait to get, uh, my 13-year-old couldn't wait to get. So yeah, I mean, I think it angers a lot of us. And why I wanted even come on here and talk about it was not that I think that anything's going to change. Um, and my kids, as long as they feel comfortable and they're not getting bullied to wear a mask, they're going to keep wearing a mask because they get it. And again, we're in a family that we've seen it. I mean, you know, my wife has had to dawn the hazmat suit to give monoclonal antibodies to people coming in begging for a chance in January when they were found that they had COVID. And by and large, I mean, it, it can't give away, by and large, these were all unvaccinated people. All right. Um, so yeah, I feel good that my kids are as protected as they can be. But the, the risk will go up once the masks come off. And based on the amount of times that my kids got a notification that somebody close to them was infected, thankfully, because they were wearing masks, they didn't get it. Um, I can just imagine that going up for the rest of the school year. We talk about anxiety. That's the kind of thing that drives the kids' anxiety up, was when they're wondering, am I going to get sick? Am I going to bring it to my parents? And could I possibly, and I, I'll put this as blunt as possible, the things they think about. Am I possibly going to give my parents something that's going to kill them and I'm not going to have a parent anymore? So we want to talk about blunt, what kids really are thinking about? That's some of the things that they're thinking about. Maybe not everyone, but that's the flip side. For everyone was like, this is just nothing but the cold. It isn't. Maybe if you're vaccinated and you don't get very many symptoms, that's fine. We still don't know what the long-term effects are. We're basically saying, yeah, we've had enough, so we'll just put all the kids at risk. We'll see what happens. We can't turn that clock back in a couple of years if we wish we were wrong. So again, I, I guess what I'm saying is I have no choice if the school decides to take the mask mandates off or whatever, but at the same time, if But at the same time, if they kept them for the rest of the school year, I wouldn't have a problem with that either. But it's just crazy to me that we aren't really thinking about this from a scientific point of view. And we're willing to actually put our kids at potential risk or our families for a, a virus that we clearly don't understand. So that's really all I wanted to say on it. And like I said.
Thank you, James. The next person I have is Claire Molner.
Thank you. I was asked by a couple of the nurses who are on vacation to, to attend tonight, just to know what's going on. I've got to say, I appreciate the comment about trying to make kids comfortable and families comfortable with whatever decisions they do make. But to the points that have been brought up here, I know of very few nurses, I've not personally spoken to any nurse, who has not said that they would cannot continue to wear their masks through the year because they are concerned about, about transmission of what we all perceive to be a devastating disease. For our children, yes, and for our families and coworkers. So for what it's worth, the nurses, pretty much, at least in the State School Nurses Association, and the ones I've talked to in GRCSU, are still planning to keep their masks just because we do pay attention to the science. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. The next person I have is Ryan DeSill.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for having this meeting. Thank you for having the survey. I really appreciate it. I don't really have much more to add that hasn't already been said by, by Nate and by the survey results themselves. I think it's great we're having this discussion. I'd like to see them come off on Monday when the kids go back. The school is currently the only place my kids have to wear a mask, so I don't really think the transition piece would be a factor. Most places are optional now. And that's how I think it should be for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. The next person is Janelle Carr.
Hi, thank you. I currently have four kids at Middletown Springs Elementary School. This is the eighth year that we have sent our kids to this school. Sorry. And so the behaviors that are happening at Middletown Springs Elementary School this year are absolutely terrible. My children have experienced harassment and bullying among other awful things. And these things are happening in our elementary school. I'm not saying that our school has been perfect in years prior, but we have never seen these behaviors to the degree that we are seeing them before this year. In prior years, our school has had a safe and warm, welcoming environment. That is not what my kids have experienced this year. Our daughter has been the victim of a couple of those awful harassment and bullying situations. She's experienced stress this year that no elementary student should ever have to experience. I believe that these horrible behaviors are stemming from a greater problem, and that is that the staff at these schools have been instructed to put so much of their time and energy into enforcing COVID nineteen protocols. Most of these behaviors could have been stopped sooner if they had been paying attention to what's going on in their classrooms before becoming out of control. The job of our school is to educate our children in a healthy and safe environment. This job has been overlooked because of having to enforce COVID nineteen protocols. This job has been overlooked because of focusing on making sure that kids are wearing a mask on their face. The impact that we have allowed this to have on our kids is astronomical. They're suffering educationally, behaviorally, and socially. Unfortunately, because of all of this, we are pulling our fifth grader and our sixth grader from our school. I always thought that all four of my kids would graduate sixth grade from Middletown. I never imagined having to pull my kids partway through the school year, but that's how bad it's gotten. Because the behaviors that are happening this year, behaviors that could have been caught and stopped at the beginning of the year, if we weren't so focused on masking our kids, we feel that pulling our kids is necessary. I'm asking you to please change how you are weighing the costs and benefits of masking. We have a lot more information now. The risks of COVID on the kids is far outweighed by the harms of the mitigation measures. I'm asking you to please change your mind and the policies at the school and let the parents decide what is best for their children effective immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Ashley Siemens.
Hi. So I'm a parent to, to students, one at PHS, one at PES, and I'm also a staff member at PES. I'm the reading assistant, and I just want to let everybody know that I respect your choice to vax or not vax, mask, to not mask, but it should be a parent's choice. Teaching foundations the last two years has been so hard. You're supposed to see how the mouth moves to make the sounds and how the tongue is positioned in the mouth. You can't do that behind a mask. So trying to teach this to our students has been very hard and a lot of times unsuccessful because they can't see how you're positioning your, your mouth and your tongue and all that. So mine is just kind of short. I just want to be able to have a choice for myself, for the kids, for the families in the district. I've worked actually as the nurse when Mrs. Ciccarelli has been out. I've actually swabbed the noses. I've entered the data. So I've been at firsthand with all of this. So I've seen, you know, kids get sick. And I'll say out loud, my, my daughter had COVID, and you wouldn't know. You, I was lucky. She has had no aftermath. She, I wouldn't have even realized she had COVID, so I was blessed in that way. And unfortunately, it hits people different. You know, some people have no symptoms. Some people get very sick, little sick. And unfortunately, you know, some people do die, and I'm sorry for anybody that has experienced that, but it's the way of life. So we have to start doing what our bodies are meant to do and fight this. People wear masks if they want to wear them and not. They get vaxxed if they want to. It's got to be a personal choice. It shouldn't be, you know, a mandate. So basically, that's all.
Thank you. Kaitlin Razanowski. Kaitlin Razanowski, you're the next person I have on the list.
Hi, sorry about that. First and foremost, I just want to say thank you guys for all you have done keeping our kids safe. My son goes to West Rutland. Currently, at this time, you know, I am supporting, if you want to drop the masks and make it optional, I would be supportive of that. If you want to continue the masks, I'd be supportive of that also. I work in healthcare. I have seen COVID firsthand at this point, you know, like the science and, and the CDC is saying is if you're not wearing an N ninety-five or a KN ninety-five, how effective is that mask? That being said, you know, I think my mask protects myself. If my son is wearing his mask, it's not protecting him. It is protecting the others. So I think that, you know, if, if you still feel safe wearing a mask, if that makes you feel better, go forward and do it. But again, I respect, you know, whatever decision is made because ultimately we need to do what everyone feels is best and keep our kids safe. But that's, you know, I'm just thinking that a mask is really only protecting others, not himself.
Thank you, Caitlin. The last person I have signed to speak is Kathy McGrath.
Hi, my name is Katherine McGrath, and I'm a West Rutland resident. So I'm going to try to skim down what I have here, but I would like to thank you guys for reaching out and having this meeting and having the questionnaire sent out to the parents. I do understand that there's going to be strong feelings on both sides of the aisle, and my feelings are no more important than, than other parents here. But I did want to point out that the policies need to be made within the board and superintendent's authority. So it's my understanding that back in August, these policies came out because of this Title sixteen of the Vermont statute, section eight thirty-four A, saying that the schools had a duty of care. I'm not sure if the school looked into legal advice to determine if these, in fact, mitigation measures do fall under this duty of care. But I would be curious to know if these mask mandates are not dropped immediately, then does this duty of care, is this duty of care really something that the school has the authority to do? Definitely not a lawyer, but I would think that duty of care is making sure the salt, the sidewalks are salted when it's icy, have a secure building to protect our students from intruders, and not to let small children play with exacto knives. But to mandate our children wear masks when the virus has statistically proven that our children are not at severe risk of COVID for the variants that have been present in Vermont. Because according to the Vermont Department of Health, out of the thirty thousand seven hundred seventeen children ages zero to nineteen that have tested positive in Vermont, I've had no, twenty-four percent of them have had no symptoms. That's roughly seven thousand four hundred had no symptoms and zero have died. The state stopped reporting on their data summary specific to children after November third, two thousand twenty-one. But as of then, only ten children ages zero to nineteen had been hospitalized due to or with COVID. So if you're age zero to nineteen and tested positive for COVID in Vermont, you have a twenty-four percent chance of not having any symptoms, a point zero three two six percent chance of being hospitalized, and a zero percent chance of dying. Our resilient and compliant children are suffering. Decisions that were mandated by our schools have negatively affected our children. According to the Vermont Department of Health, four hundred sixty-three children ages zero to fourteen, it's four hundred sixty-three children that are barely teenagers in Vermont, have been admitted to the ER for suicidal thoughts and self-directed violence in two thousand twenty-one alone. So no one under thirty has died in Vermont due to COVID. Less than ten children under the age of twenty have been hospitalized in an almost two-year period. And we have four hundred sixty-three children under age fifteen in Vermont during two thousand twenty-one alone that have been admitted to the ER for suicidal thoughts and self-harm. And the school is mandating that children wear masks to keep them safe. I kept my child out of school for the past two years to protect him from these mitigation measures. I don't think that my child should wear a mask. And some parents may feel that's best for their children to wear one, and that is their right. I don't think this, I don't think the school staff applied for their jobs with the school or the board members ran to be elected to this board to be responsible for COVID mitigation measures. The position you are in is awful. But after two years of this, it looks like you have the opportunity to give the mass decision back to the parents. I strongly support giving the decision back to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's the last person that signed up in the chat. Is there anyone else on the call that wishes to speak this evening before the board starts their discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move in to new business for board discussion about masking. Comments, thoughts?
I will, Lisa.
Thank you.
I, um, the discussion has been awesome and, and a couple of places kind of bad, but both sides make a very good point, and I think that's why you don't see a lot of board members speaking up here. It is a terrible position to be in because, like I said, every child matters. We don't want to lose any of them because we didn't do the mask mandate. And we don't want to make, and we know there are social, emotional events, things happening with our students because, and partially because of the COVID and the isolation they went through. I myself, I don't think I'm ready to make a decision on this. I truly would like to see what happens after the vacation. So even if we said, well, we'll look at, we'll, as of March first, third, whatever, even if we give it a week after vacation, and see what happens with COVID with the students or with the population in general. I don't, I don't think I'm going to be able to make that decision until we find out what actually is going to happen. I don't feel like I'm able to say, okay, well, we'll do it after the April vacation for the same reasons. I just, I understand, believe me, both sides of the issue, and this has got nothing to do, I, it would be easy if I could go with what I would recommend myself. But as a board member, the responsibility is great. And our duty to care does include COVID. Like I said, I do not want to be one of the board members that says, okay, let's take the masks off. And even if a child probably would have gotten COVID anyways, but is seriously ill, never mind if they die, I could not live with the decision. I, I'd, I'd beat myself up for the rest of my life. And then on the other hand, I'm sorry, I was reading who left. And on the other hand, yes, I mean, I feel really, really bad for our indoor sports teams. I can't stand wearing a mask. Although when it's really bitterly cold out, I gotta say, I kind of enjoy it because it warms my face up. But I can't breathe. I have a hard time breathing. So if you're out on the basketball court and you're trying to play and you're running and jumping, I can't imagine how those kids are feeling as far as being able to get enough air. And that's it. I just don't think I'm ready right now, Lisa, to make a decision other than to meet again and see what the COVID situation is. Thanks.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes, thank you. Chris and Lisa, amazing job you guys have been doing with all of this. This is, this is so much pressure, and now that I've listened to everybody tonight, you know, I can, I can understand that the pressure that you guys are on and, and, and I just want to, want to talk a little bit about from a maintenance standpoint. Vermont has this program called, I wrote all this stuff down, indoor air quality for all, all schools to kind of help manage their indoor, and I'm talking about all the schools in the district. I've been to most of the schools in the district. And that is where if, if we can, if we can go back to our communities and say, hey, our schools are, has clean filters, have fresh running, fresh air coming in. There was a couple of people that mentioned not so good air. If we can, if we can improve on those things, and I think this is the time to do that, along with making sure people are, to stay healthy. So I just want to kind of mention that, that, that we kind of put a little bit of focus on making our schools even healthier. And whatever we can do with some of the COVID money to upgrade units or filters or cleaning systems or make sure the systems are working properly so that we put kids in a, in a healthy classroom. We put kids in a health, healthy school, like in our gymnasium, when, when the kids are playing basketball and stuff. We, we can actually measure the oxygen level in, in the, in that particular room with all of those people in there so that you make sure you maintain a healthy way for everybody to be. So focusing on some of that stuff, being in the maintenance profession for such a long time would really, I think, help settle people's minds and help people say, okay, we're, we're putting, we're putting these kids, fifteen kids in a classroom with fresh air, or are we putting fifteen kids in a classroom with no air? And then if we pull the mask off and we have all these kids, like one gentleman said, some, come kids coming back from vacation. And it's like, okay, you're putting all these kids in a room with no ventilation or no exhaust. So if, if we can work on that kind of stuff to maybe bring back to the community, to maybe give them a little bit of peace of mind on, you know, your, your kids are in a healthy, healthy place, you know, and you know, and again, I, I have to, I have to go with Lynette. I just, I, I want to hear, see some more science, some more, you know, whatever to make sure that we, we make the right decision for the kids. Thank you.
Lisa, can I just respond? I, I just want, Jeff, well, I appreciate the feedback. I just, I want to be very. our schools on a regular basis have been monitoring the quality of air in our classrooms. We provide air purifiers. I just, I, I'm just, I'm very concerned with the statement or the implication that our schools are somehow unhealthy, which is not the case. For two years, we've been monitoring these, these things. Our, our facilities directors, and I know whether it may be a building issue or this, that, but like I said, it's something which has been monitored, has been early on. You know, there's been the air quality. So this has been something that's been on our minds, our administrators' minds, our staff minds. As I said, we've been providing air purifiers for all our classrooms, you know, around this. I mean, so yes, I understand the concern that is, it's going to mask, but I just want to just, you know, publicly state that, like I said, this is something which we have been dealing with on a daily basis to, and I just want to make sure that we're not flippantly saying that our schools are unhealthy, and that's, I just want to kind of clarify that for the public record. So thank you.
Okay. Tina?
Hi. I, um, I, I want to thank Chris and Lisa for doing all that work over this vacation, taking all that survey information and creating a program for us to watch. I have been a very strong voice for masking in the schools. I feel like it's kept us safe. I do think that we are at the point where things are turning the corner. I feel that, like Lynette said, playing basketball with masks, first of all, is nearly impossible. Secondly, if you actually watch the players playing, their masks are almost entirely either below their nose or below their mouth while they're playing or even on the bench. Kids are gathering outside of school consistently without masks. Many kids, even if they aren't vaccinated, have had COVID at this point. I feel like it's time to start return, trying to get back towards not wearing masks. I do agree that a transition period would be helpful. I think first it would protect us a little bit from anything that people brought back from vacation. Secondly, I think it would be helpful to have a little time in school where kids are going to be prepared that some kids aren't going to wear them anymore. And, you know, what to think about that and how to treat those that do choose to still wear them or their parents still want them to wear them. But I do think that it's time to start transitioning, whether it's a week or two weeks. I'm, you know, after that, I think we should get back to not wearing them.
Thank you, Tina. Eric?
It's like you knew I was going to raise my hand.
I could tell. I could just tell that I was forming up there, Eric.
Yes, thank you. And, and I just want to thank Chris and Lisa as well. The, the presentation was very informational and helpful, but I, I, I kind of want to, you know, go back to, you know, our, our discussions back in August and September, you know, about masking and, and under the, you know, the, the duty of care that we, we, we took upon to, you know, force the masking. And even though, you know, a lot of our summer programs or masking wasn't required, it was, it was really difficult. You know, because it almost seemed like, you know, hypocritical, but we, we took the guidance from the Department of Health and the Agency of Education and, 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 and use that to, you know, ensure that the students were safe and that this would help the mitigation of COVID. And, you know, I stand by that decision. And, you know, however, as things have, and this is, this is my opinion, that things have changed and, and we're seeing new discussions and data behind masking and, and the effects and I also am in the opinion that, that, that going masking optional, you know, puts this back in the, in the control of, of parents and their choice for, on how they want, you know, their kids. And and I had another point here on the, but, you know, I also think that you know, we, we also, because we have also been following, you know, the guidance, you know, why, why change now? I, I think that, and, and hope that we're going to see the shift, you know, in the state of Vermont. And that it's, it's going to make this possible and, and still safe, but as far as a timeline goes, I, I agree with Tina. Right after spring break probably wouldn't be a wise choice. A week or two. I, I would agree. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much my, my thought on it. I, I think it's, you know, those who wish to have their students continue to wear masks. And, and those who don't, I, I think it's, it's time to let the parents make the choice.
Eric, can I clarify? You said after spring break, were you referring to February break? The spring break's not till April. I just want to clarify. Thanks.
It seemed like spring the possibility. Amanda?
Hi, I would also like to say that you guys did an awesome job on the presentation. I was quite impressed. I think that was great information. I, I'm also in favor of the optional masking. I just have a couple of other things that I think we should think about. Two, and one being, you know, if we look at that eighty percent vaccination rate, yes, that's just the number. Yes, that might change. But I just wonder if we have any record anywhere in our schools, like, of how many kids have already had COVID? And if we add up the kids that have had COVID and the vaccinated kids, maybe we actually are at eighty percent immunity, maybe it be vaccinated or unvaccinated. I'm not sure. But I'm, I'm definitely in favor of, of the mask to optional and leaving the parents in charge. I think it's super important. As, as a parent of a kiddo who's never been to school without a mask on, I think that's great. I just, I do think we have a lot of things to look at as far as like the law, I guess, you know, I want to make sure that we move slowly. I wouldn't really suggest doing it the Monday after break, but I, I do, I do think it should happen within the next thirty days. Definitely. I just think that we need to go over some things as far as decisions that have already been made and laws that are in place and just make sure that we do it correctly before we look like the bad guy that said, put a mask on, take a mask off. So that's all.
Thank you, Amanda. Are there any other GRCSU board members that haven't spoken Seth Howard?
Thank you, Lisa. And yeah, I want to thank actually everyone who participated in the meeting tonight, and by participating, I simply mean by logging in and being here. Extra special thanks to everybody who took the time to make a comment as well, and it was clear that I think everyone who was making comments clearly had spent some time and effort thinking and preparing for this as well. And it's not a simple, easy task, and it's not a simple, easy topic. So I want to thank everybody who, who came out tonight and put themselves out there to do that. That being the said, sorry, that being said, the way I am thinking about this at the moment is that, is that I, I personally don't think, I personally don't believe that I've heard enough information yet tonight to, to go along with any change to the policy versus how we have it now. And I will say that the policy as we have it now, I would consider at that eighty percent, not necessarily the mandate for everybody. I'm thinking, yes, it's mandated for everybody because we are not the eighty percent. But the reason why I say that, there, there's a couple of things that I would like to have some more information on if, if we have this stuff and if we can share it. One top, one of these points is, what is going to activate a rerequirement, right? So it's totally within the possibility that although things are really improving quickly at the moment, one month ago is, I believe, the worst we've seen so far, as, as far as COVID has been in these areas, and particularly here in Polkman, the town was, it's really, really hard. That was super recent, and, and things have been changing and being up and down, kind of on a roller coaster this, this whole time through, through seasonal changes and, and things like that. So I'm really curious about what are we going to do to reinstate a mandate if it should be required? And what are those trigger points? What are those requirements going to look like? Is there a, you know, certain number of cases in the school, a percentage number in the case? And, and that's another point, and, and this is maybe data we can't even necessarily share and talk about, but percentage of students in the schools, let's say, on a monthly basis or month by month, who, who've had positive cases, right? So these, these numbers mean something to me. Potentially more than even vaccination rates do actually, because how many students we're actually getting and transmitting around to their families, et cetera. These, these are what's important, and, and I, I, I'm just not comfortable to, to say I'm ready for a change yet for, for those reasons, because I think it's, it's a little early yet. We've, we've felt a lot better a number of times already, and a month ago was the worst we've seen. So, yeah, like I said, I'm not there. And I know everybody wants to get back to normal, but one comment that I want to, just out of, out of everybody that spoke tonight, James Kent made a comment that just, three words, sense of normal, was, was a phrase that he said. And that is actually what we're talking about. We are talking about a sense of normal. This is, anybody who believes that it's back to normal now or will be back to normal next week if we take the masks away, I, I think is, is, is not, not taking the totality of the situation into consideration here and, and what, what we've been watching for the past two years at this point in time. So, yeah, I'm, I'm not in a place tonight where I'm ready to go for a change. Thank you.
Chris, do you want to address either of Seth's question? What would trigger a re-mask or if we have gathered data about those that have had COVID in our schools?
Well, first, we, you know, we do have the data around individuals who have tested positive for COVID, but we don't share that because that's not a metric that we're currently using for any decision-making. So, you know, like I said, currently, the eighty percent is just the eight percent of individuals that they consider to be fully vaccinated, as James did talk about. They now do consider boosters to be a part of that. And we are waiting for that verified information to come from the state, but, so that's why we, I know a lot of people want to use or kind of lump in the, the percentage of our students who have had COVID along with, and I know that there, 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 there are people who have very strong convictions about that, as I said, but, you know, according, you know, what we've, the metric that we've, or the state uses to identify as that eighty percent is, that's not being considered. So as of right now, we, we don't consider that, but we do have that information available. In terms of, you know, moving in and out, I think that's the discussion that we're going to have, I think, moving forward. Seth, I think that's, regardless, I think, you know, we talked about, you know, if the, the board would decide to stay with the AOE, the AOE could very, you know, very easily next Tuesday say, hey, we're going mask optional. And then, and then what? I think we're back here, you know, saying, oh, geez, are we ready for this mask optional? Do we feel, for all the reasons we said, but once we were, you know, moving with the AOE, then we have to make that decision is, do we, you know, the board's still making that decision or, you know, do we continue following AOE or do we then say, no, we're going to keep the mask on despite what the AOE says? I think that's, that's the big discussion that, that I think moving forward. I think that's where we don't know where we're at. And I think, you know, talking with Lisa and other admins over the past month or so, as we've been looking at, you know, the, this glide trajectory that Secretary French likes to talk about as removing towards this endemic approach is, well, you know, what happens, you know, at some, you know, like, you know, in the summer or, you know, in the fall. Last summer, we, you know, I think in Fourth of July, I think people were in a celebratory mood. They, you know, they, you know, things were over, and then all of a sudden, you know, in August, you know, kind of a, a bit of a body blow to everyone that's, oh, geez, hey, we're kind of, we're going back to where we were, and a lot of people felt like, well, I thought we were past that, and I think we're still going to be at that, at that point where we may see surges, but I think what we're starting to see is this, this idea of, and I think, I, I can't remember if it was Secretary French or Dr. Levine or Governor Scott. I can't remember who had said it, but there, there are saying that the school-based mitigation measures should parallel or reflect societal-based mitigation measures, and that's one of the things they're taking a look at is the fact that, and I'll just say this, that, you know, one of the things that's been very stressful and frustrating for, for our staff and for our administration is the fact that we've, you know, we have these, this one set of standards for our, our schools, and that's to say we're for or against it, but yet the minute they leave that, that they said that they're going to a restaurant and masks are coming off, they're going to Hanaford, masks are coming off, and, and not to say one's right and one's wrong, but I said, there's this inconsistency in terms of from a school-based perspective, that societal-based perspective, I think what the state is going to look to do is how better to align those, you know, with still mitigating risk. And I, you know, and I think we've all talked about the understanding that we are going to be dealing with COVID in some capacity for the near future, but what, what does that look like in our schools in, in moving forward? So I, you know, if, if the AOE comes and says tomorrow, hey, mask optional, I mean, I, I had heard tonight, you know, on the call from a fellow superintendent, that the CDC is going to be, you know, releasing an updated mask mandate, and what a lot of people believe that the CDC is going to, you know, change their thoughts on indoor masking mandate, and that will impact some of these decision-making, but it's not going to change these strong feelings that people expressed tonight. And that's, that, that's the biggest thing is, people have expressed strong feelings on, on all sides. I'm respectful of those. But regardless of what, you know, the, the AOE or CDC says, those strong feelings are still going to be there. We're still going to be with that same point like, well, what do we do? How do we proceed? You know, with, with, you know, the, the well-being interest of, of all of our families in mind, and that's a difficult process. So, so Seth, like I said, and there is no real answer in terms of, well, how do we go back to this? Because if we, if we do decide to shift away, then, you know, like I said, there is a metric. We may see the CDC recommend more of a, it's a local health department decision. You're looking more from a county-based perspective. And if a local health department, you know, issues a, you know, a, a warning or something like that, then do we look at, do we pivot? I don't know. Like I said, these are things which we're hearing about, but we're still working through that. So that's a very good question, Seth, but at this time, we don't know, and I can't predict the future, and that, it's been that for two years, a day-to-day situation, which we're trying to handle the current moment, but also look at what's, what's ahead of us, and we don't want to look too far ahead of ourselves either, so. So I, I did, I took a long time and I didn't really answer your question, so I apologize.
Michael, did you have anything, Michael Moser, that you wanted to add? Comment?
Good evening. You know, I'm, I, first of all, I want to thank Chris and Lisa for their presentation. Thank all the, the admins and, and Chris and their leadership over this past two years. My, my choice right now is it's time to flip the coins, time to put the parents back in charge of their kids' health and welfare. The data that Lisa presented earlier in the beginning of this sort of overwhelmingly shows that that's the feeling of, of the, of those who took the survey. We had nine people testify tonight, basically, and, and of those nine, five of them were for, let's stop masking. I understand that there may be a little bit of a time lag, but I'm all for, let's take them off and let's move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Meredith? Meredith? I just saw her. I just wanted to give everyone on the board an opportunity to speak. Eric?
Yeah, I think Kristen Ross has her hand raised way before mine.
Right, but currently I'm just, we're just having current discussion amongst GRCSU board members.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just, I just wanted, there were a couple of things that I, I left out earlier that came to mind, and, and I just wanted to just, I had thoughts about, you know, those who don't want masks to go optional and they would like to see that, you know, their child, their student, See that, you know, their child, their student. Should still wear masks in school. We've been, you know, essentially forcing the masks since the start of the school year. And I think, you know, for those parents who want their kids to continue to still wear masks, we should. In some way. Help and make sure that that's happening in school. And I understand that might be a. There's issues around that, like kids, you know, potentially bullying, kids getting made fun of because they're wearing masks, because, you know, their. Their parents want them to, but. I also think that. You know, it's important that, you know, parents who want their kids to go to school with masks on, that they feel safe as well. While they're going to school, and and I'm sure there's an extra workload, but that's something that, you know. I I think is important to consider as well. And then the other thing. That I didn't mention is that. You know. We. You know, we gave, you know, Superintendent Sell this, you know, authority. You know, for this mitigation, and I just. You know, my thought behind this whole conversation is in regards to, I guess. Like a recommendation or advice, but overall, I still believe that. Any changes in in the masking is solely on the superintendent still, so. And so that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, before I go to, oh, Meredith, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I was having muting issues before. I I agree with Eric, especially in terms of the. The authority that we have declared to Krista, Chris, and. I also am very concerned that. You know, we are just a month away from our highest cases, and we need a couple of weeks to. Be on firmer ground, because I believe at the. At the governor's press conference, they did speak that things were not, they were going in the correct direction, but they're actually not all of the data. In fact, we're struggling the way apparently Maine did a few weeks ago. And that all the cases aren't as low as it would, as other parts of the country. So I'm not in a major rush. I totally understand all the issues that are laid out. I don't like being threatened, but I. Appreciate everybody's comments and the hard work that our assistant, our superintendent and assistant superintendent have done with this. So I'd like to continue going with their guidance.
Okay, thank you. Before I go, we have two other board members that want to speak that. And before I go to them, I I just want to share my. Point on this, and perhaps share a motion to let you. Muddle through while we listen to the two other board members. Something perhaps to the effect that we would direct the superintendent. To create a transition plan to go mask optional on March fourteenth. So I'm just gonna leave that with you and and let that. Saute, and I'm going to go to Kristen Ross.
Hi, everybody. I'll see if I can get my camera to work. Thanks, Lisa. Just wanted to say, just in case no decision was made today. I might be. Representing Poltony the next time you meet, so just wanted to. Put that in there. I just have questions that Seth kind of got at, and you actually just kind of got at, is for the. Or to consider is having some kind of plan for. You know, shutting schools down in case when we do go transition to no masks or optional masks. That if if there is an increase, especially in staff illness. You know, one of the things the mental health professionals are saying is kids need to be in school. And I've sort of felt up, at least until. You know, this month, really, that masks help our kids be in school, or at least most of the kids be in school. And being in school, at least even if they're having a mask, is better than having lots of kids out sick. Or maybe not that sick, but still have COVID and can't attend school. So that's one question is having, you know, when we have surges. If masks become optional, say, post-vacation time, whether that's February, whether it's April, whatever. Just to have sort of something in place, and I think, Lisa, your. Proposed motion would get at that as well, and then. To let the public know, communities, families know that there may be a time in the future with the next variant that's coming. We may need to have. Masks back in school, or it may not be a mandate per se, but it may be a strong recommendation. So. Just wanted to to ask those questions to the board as you do consider or make a decision whether that's today or in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jody Dickerson?
Hello. I will, he said, please, I would just amend everything that. Came from Nate. And. As far as taking the two weeks after the February break. There will be sort of a transition period just organically built into this process, because when you say, you know, masks are optional. Seemingly, you know, thirty to forty percent of the parents will continue to send their children to school with a mask. Perhaps half of the staff will still choose to wear a mask. I'm not sure where, you know, where that lies. But half of the community may choose to continue wearing a mask. And so it's, you know, we have half of the people feeling like they. Are protecting themselves or protecting others or whatever it is that they feel, and and the other half feeling. Like they are doing what is best for their own personal children. So there is kind of an organic transition within that. My fear of. Waiting two weeks to drop the mandate is that there's really no. I mean, there's really no logical reason for for setting that goalpost two weeks from now. There's. There's no reasoning behind it, and I fear that what it's going to be is. Just another illogical mandate that is going to lead to to budget problems. It's going to lead to all of the parents that have had a problem with this for two years. Saying, I'm voting no to this budget. No, you're not doing it, and I just don't see. I just don't see why we would want to put ourselves through that. When there's really no logical reason to wait two weeks. It sounds like everyone is pretty much in agreement that it's time for this to go back into the parent's hands. And. I I don't see any logic behind behind the waiting.
Well, Jody, I I'm just going to say two things. I I think it's disappointing. Adults that come to these meetings and want to threaten. The entire community and every school by saying, if you don't do what we want, we're going to vote no. You can certainly vote however you want. But. And also, as a board member, I I find that really disappointing. But if you were listening to the beginning of. The meeting, one of the reasons for the transition, and one of the reasons when Superintendent Sell talked about other. Issues and the transition is to give. Parents and students that need that opportunity to make a choice to set up if a child. Because of their situation needs to perhaps go to VTVLC, or whatever that is, that we have an opportunity within the schools. To make those. Situations work for all of our students. So when we talk about a transition plan, those are the kinds of things that we're talking about.
Okay, well, too bad, I would say, though, is that I don't see it as a threat. I see it as parents saying. We don't agree with the direction that this school was going, and therefore, we don't agree with spending extra money or our tax money. On this issue. I mean, I find it disrespectful for, I have two children that are currently. Being, they they are refused in education. One, because she has such anxiety that she cannot go to school. And the other, because he had bleeding sores all over his top lip. From a mask.
Okay, we'll we'll agree to disagree about people who want to come on and and say about voting no on budgets. Thank you. Amanda, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to bounce off what Kristen said, and that's kind of what I was thinking in my comment. Before was just, I I am for going optional, but I I think, like Kristen said, kind of. If we had a plan from Chris or some of Chris's ideas, like. You know, when we remove the mask, we're probably going to see a lot of other things, like strep throat and typical sinus infections and. And things like that, and I just think that before we jump to this, we really need a plan, like. Can these kids come to school with strep throat if they've had an antibiotic for twenty-four hours, even though a sore throat? And a fatigue is two symptoms of COVID, where right now it says two or more symptoms. You can't come, or you have to test, or then would we be looking at? Testing every day for these kids that have something like strep throat? That's just an example, and. And so I just, I I think those are the things we need to look at, and I don't know if that's something we look at it. In another meeting together like this? Or if that's something that Chris just kind of looks at on his own and then makes the decision, but that's just one of the other things that. I think we need to. Kind of think of in this plan is these kids have been covered up for two years. They're gonna get. Stuffy noses, they're gonna get bacterial infections, and it might not be COVID, but they should be allowed to come to school if it's not COVID. So I I don't know, I feel like it's a, there's a lot more behind it other than just take the mask off. Even though I want to take the mask off.
And I I think that's what we're talking about when we're talking about having Chris create a transition plan, is kind of addressing. Those different. Issues that that could come up, so that when we get ready to send that out. To parents and make our community, let our communities know that this is. You know, the date that we're going mask optional, that we can say to parents, you know, this is what we're looking at. I mean. Whether we decide to go mask optional or not, for example, if your child's riding a bus, they're going. Riding the bus, they're going to have to wear a mask, because that's federal law, so we don't trump that. So there are pieces like that that I'm not sure that. You know, everyone is aware of, and so that would be piece. A piece of the transition plan as well that Chris and Lisa would be putting together. With information to share to parents.
Yeah, I, that actually, I'm glad you brought that up, and hopefully, it's not inappropriate for me to ask, but when you, when you mentioned the bus. I guess I didn't think of our school buses as public transportation. I thought they were. I I guess I wasn't, I didn't expect that our buses were included in that. Is there? Some guidance that I missed defining our school buses as public transportation?
So Amanda, that's that's been since the start of the school year, it's, school buses follow the federal guidelines. And so therefore, masks have to be worn on school buses. There has been a. A discussion amongst the superintendents with. Excuse me, there has been a discussion with the superintendent and Secretary French about moving forward. Is if they, we get some more clarity around that, but as of right now. Regardless, it would be tomorrow, two weeks, a month, that masks would have to be worn on buses.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was just, I was looking at that federal guidance, and I just, I didn't realize, so thank you for clarifying.
Hey, man, I'll just say, I know, but I I have friends who are down at Disney World, and they thought it was mask optional, but. They're very upset that they, when they ride the monorail or the the bus down at Disney World, they have to put the masks on, because those are considered. Under the same guidelines, so I mean, it's it's, there it's, there are a lot of, kind of. A lot of aspects to that, that guidance around transportation, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so what is the pleasure of the board? Does the board feel comfortable in. Directing Chris to create a transition policy, Lynette?
Hi. Definitely need that. Our staff. At the very least, the staff, I mean, the parents are gonna know, and like I said, I'm not against. Mask optional. I just cannot put a date on it myself until we have something set up. Teachers and parents, especially the teachers, are going to have to know about the special. Situations within the school, because there are students that. Have to wear masks because of complications. And you're right. It. Saddens me that there are students that are not in our school system. Because the parents are afraid of COVID. But then again, those very parents are out playing sports and everything else with their children. That are supposedly compromised without masks. So this is, this is not a win situation, no matter which way we go. I would like to see mask optional, and I'm trying to, I tried to stay out of really stating that, because. I feel Rutland Town is in a unique position, because we're so close to that arbitrary eighty percent. I don't want anybody to think that that is why. I'm thinking one way or the other. No matter what we do, I have some comfort in knowing that my Rutland Town students are a little. More protected. But then again, like you said, well, how many have had COVID? How many of the students? But that is, that immunity is, does not last long. So you really can't count that in the same category as the vaccinations and the booster. So like I said, I'm very much, once we get a plan on how to. Pull this off reasonably. And see where, what happens after vacation, I'm more than willing to discuss a date. And Lisa, you're straight on, we do need, Chris, and if you want, I can put that into a motion. To have Lisa work on that.
Okay, let's hear what Eric has to say, and then we can see.
Okay.
I I was just going to make a motion. That we direct the superintendent to create a transition plan for optional masking in schools. And COVID nineteen mitigation.
I'll second it. Lisa, you muted.
Discussion, Amanda?
Sorry, I just wanted to add that in that plan. I I would like to see, I guess, like policing, for lack of words, like. Will we expect our teachers to? Keep their masks on or not? And and either way, I'm I'm fine with either way, I just. I don't know if that's something we should look at, as well as like, kind of the sickness and all of the. Other things that go on with unmasking, like if. I I I agreed with Eric when he mentioned earlier that we need to respect those. Who continue to keep their students masked. But I also understand that we have teachers with, you know, twenty students, and if. Two of the twenty are masks, how does the teacher keep those two masks on? So. I'm sorry, Chris, I know that's a big thing to throw at you, but I I think we should look at that in the plan as well.
And I think we've kind of discussed that at different points, and. And maybe Chris will disagree, but I think that what we've talked about is that. That's a little bit like sending your child to school to wear their glasses. You know, like, as the parent, you send them with the glasses, they leave the house with the glasses on. If we decide to go mask optional and. Families continue to. Want to have their students to wear masks, we cannot direct our teachers to be the mask police. I mean, we know. We've heard tonight, and we've heard from some teachers, that that's going to have to be that responsibility and conversation. Between, you know, the parent and the child, so I don't know if Chris has a different take on that.
No, no, I'm sorry, I needed to clarify. I, that's what I meant. I just thought maybe the plan should include whether it was or was not being policed, so that we didn't have a family thinking we would.
Okay.
Make their child wear a mask if they chose to. I'm I'm sorry, that was my mistake for not.
Gotcha. Seth?
Yeah, my original question was going to be about, so so. Hearing Eric's motion, I believe, if I understood it correctly. Directing Chris to come up with a plan, and then that plan will be reviewed again, or is the plan supposed to, because. I know, earlier, Lisa Meiser, you made a suggestion, a very, very, very similar. One, but you mentioned something about, say, like, either March fourteenth or in fourteen days. So I just want to clarify, are we talking about? We want Chris to come up with a plan, and then it will be reviewed. We want Chris to come up with a plan and then it will be reviewed at. Board level or approve, or are we asking him to come up with a plan? Where masking becomes optional on a specific date.
So Eric's, Eric's motion didn't include a, a date. But as Chris has said, and I mean, if we've listened to the governor or Secretary French or Dr. Levine. That all of these um individuals are giving kind of cues that, you know, that it's going to be changing. And, you know, I think particularly with the VPA saying that when you go to the odd or UVM, that players don't need to wear. Mask or coaches or refs, that that's a pretty big cue also. So. Having Chris create a transition plan without a date assessed to it would meet, would require a special meeting. Because the GRCSU will not meet until February twenty-third, or March twenty-third, I'm sorry. So, um, essentially what you're saying without saying a date is one that you're going to. Um, create a special meeting sometime in March. Or you're not going to make a decision until uh March twenty-third, which would be when the GRCSU. Would have their reorg meeting. Personally, I, I would like to see um a date attached to it, but that's just me. Go ahead.
No, that, that was actually, yeah, no, that, your comment even clarified it, right? So that, what you were saying is that by not having a date, it was either. A or B, basically. And then C is having a date. Um, what you just said. So, so, yeah, okay. Understood.
Okay, any other discussion?
Michael? Yeah, um, I, we have to have a date specifically, specific as far as I'm concerned because. Here's, here's my conundrum. If I was to vote for the motion. To let Chris do this without a date and, and Chris is ineffective and, and on top of the guy. On top of it guy, but there's other things he needs to be doing also. This may take him a couple of three weeks to do that. So. Though I want him to come up with a plan, I don't want it to be three or four weeks down the road because of whatever. If I vote against it. Then it appears that I don't want masks to come off. How do I resolve that?
Eric?
I think uh, if anyone, you know, wants to make an amendment to this emotion, we can, we can add a date. You know, it, it makes sense to me, but. I, I wanted to say that, you know, th- this motion, you know, whether. The, you know, the, the Department of Health and AOE have recommendations. You know, later on, i- it would still be good to have a transition plan for this. Uh, so, you know, by the way, I, I think it's something that um. You know, that should be done. Um, and uh, I also wanted to um. Kind of uh weigh in on the um, you know, what I talked about earlier for, you know, for those who. Want their kids to wear masks and I, I really. You know, I, I understand that it's, it's additional work for, for teachers and staff, but. You know, we were doing that throughout this whole school year for all the students. And I, it, it, maybe it's a select few, but you know, we should. At least make an effort and I would like to see something in this plan that covers those families who. Uh, would still want their, their kids to wear masks. Honestly, it, but. Going mask optional shouldn't mean that we just ignore those who want to continue still wearing masks. Um, uh, that's my thought on that.
Lisa, can I, I, I just, I just, I respect everyone's opinion, but I think. My concern is moving forward, you know. We've, we've talked about the, the stress that it puts on teachers and. Um, you know, we want our teachers to focus on educating our kids. And well, y- you know. Having a teacher, you know, have a, a mask list and, you know, and following those kids around during a class and, you know, I, I mean, that, that's just an added burden. To be placed onto those, those teachers. And I don't, I guess, I, I, I just don't think it's fair and I'm, I'm gonna stand up for our teachers on that, that, because our goal is to. Whatever is moving forward is to really make sure that our teachers focus on, you know, the, the social, emotional, academic wellbeing. We're students, but they're not mask police. And so therefore, if they, you know, if, if I send my child to school, you know, you know. And my child's not wearing a mask, then that's a conversation I have to have with my child about wearing the mask in school. I, I, I. I'm not gonna be asking as a parent for a teacher to sit there and, you know. Police my child. I, I think that's just something which we have to, you know, to discuss. Uh, cause like I said, I, I don't think it's fair to. Place an additional burden on our staff uh during the course of, you know, the, the day to. Be the mask police. We've not been asking them to do this. Uh, you know, we, we, you know, all students were expected to wear masks. Uh, you know, a- as of this point, so teachers have just been reminding them to put their masks up. Uh, just a reminder around that, but uh to add, you know, additional thing, I think just be, you know. Your concern around the transition plan, um, I, I, I just. I think, you know, if, if the board would recommend that or is going to recommend that, I just, I believe a date is necessary. Uh, it's hard to have a transition plan where you don't know. The extent of that plan, whether it's three days, seven days, two weeks. Um, it's very hard to plan when you don't really know the extent or the length of that. And I also just want to remind board that this is a moving. Target, it always has been, that uh tomorrow morning, like I said, the CDC could come out with new guidance that shifts, you know, some thinking or. Uh, you know, next Tuesday, you know, these are things which we do have to be, you know, the plan, we have to be reflective of that, but. And, and doing this really is uh our goal moving forward, whether it be mask optional, uh follow AOE, Department of Health really is. Um, to do what's best for our kids and as well as let, just let, let our teachers focus on teaching these kids. Uh, that, that's our ultimate goal moving forward. Um, I, as someone said initially, we did not get into this business, any of us, uh, to be healthcare experts. Um, I don't think you're the teacher or an administrator, like I said, I think there, there, we felt more like healthcare experts over the past two years. I really think that, you know, we have to start looking at how do we begin, you know, allowing for us to focus more on education related decisions. So, thanks.
Lynette?
Yes, um. Mike, I hear you. Um, and I seconded it, so I would have to rescind it. Um, I. While I'm sitting here listening to everybody, I think we should. Continue with the vote to have superintendent continue in his role as we've already um designated. Now. If it does come to a point, it's gonna be at least a week and a half before. You can logically, even if the state says, okay, you can go mask optional at any time, you don't have to hit the eighty percent. Um, it's still going to take at least a week to find out, number one, what the rate is and number two. To get some kind of plan out to the schools on how, what we're going to do. I agree with Chris and I've said right along that our teachers cannot be the mask police. Um, I better make sure Johnny understands. I told him to wear the mask, he better wear it. Um, and pretty much you can tell just by the mask whether the child's worn it all day or not. But um. I just, I, I like the motion. I want the plan made. Um, I didn't put a date on it because of the same reason I've been saying right along, I don't know when that would be. Um, I don't believe that the state can say, okay, effective next Monday, you can go mask optional. Um, and even if they did, we'd have to have a special meeting, I think, Lisa, to um. To make sure that Chris is all set with that and we give him the go ahead and that's when the date will be. Um, I'd rather have a special meeting. No, I don't believe we can wait until the next regular GURKSU meeting. And that was all.
So I think if the state goes mask optional, I, I mean, I'm not sure. If we've given, if, if we're living under the premise that we've given the authority to the superintendent and this. AOE says we're mask optional and we directed the superintendent to follow the AOE and the Department of Health. That he has no option but to go mask optional without. Us having a special meeting and without us having any kind of plan in place because. That's what we're saying we're following, right, Chris?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so Chris, just asking, so if they tomorrow said, okay, um, day, first day after school. Vacation, you can be mask optional. You're telling me that we're just gonna go with that?
No, that's not what I'm telling you. But I'm telling you that we've still, as I said earlier. Um, we still would have to have a transition, you know, before that. So, um, you know, I, it, so. If it's like, say, March eighth at uh Governor Scott's Tuesday press conference, he would make that. Recommendation or Secretary French makes a recommendation that adds to this point that schools have the option to go max, you know, mask optional. I think what you'd see a lot of schools, and I think you've seen schools have sent out communication where. Um, they said that no decision will be made until March eleventh, because on the back end, they are planning, they are looking at. The uh, right around mid-March, if, if that would happen, they would have all these plans ready to go. Um, so it would not just be a, you know, a update tomorrow, you know, we're going mask optional. I think we, we would have to. Because there are a lot of things to take into account. I know that from a parent perspective, don't quite, uh, always understand that, but there are things that we would need to do. So we would have a transition plan regardless of what this board. Uh, decides tonight, I'm still going back on Monday and work with Lisa, the admin. Our nurses and we're still gonna start working on a transition plan because we know that. Um, this is coming at some time or another. Um, you know, like I said, Secretary French said, plan in March. Uh, for the, for mask optional to be in place. So, so we, we know it's coming, we, we have to, you know, be proactive in our planning. Um, so we're not just, so if it is one, where it'd be a quick turnaround, we would already have things in place, but we would not just. Uh, twenty-four hours, just say, this is where we go. So, and I know that's frustrating to some families.
But it wouldn't require this board to have a special meeting if the state says that. If, if we're following the AOE in the Department of Health. That's what we're following. So, um.
Right, I just, the way the talk was, I, I was afraid you were saying that if they said you can be mask optional on Monday. No one has to wear the mask because the state, we said we're going by their rules, but still we have to be prepared for it, for whatever. I feel a lot more comfortable, Chris, with your explanation. So I would just um re, I would just go with the. Ma- the proposal made because we can't have a date until we get all the information.
Except Chris asked for a date. So, Michael?
Yes, I'm, I, I agree with what's been said. Um, my, my issue, Lynette, would be if, if the state comes out tomorrow and says no more masking. The parents are gonna read that in the paper and that's what they're gonna do. May not be the right thing. I'm just saying, public. Public perception is gonna move in that, in that direction. So.
I understand that, but we're still here to do what's best for the.
I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just saying.
Have the plan in place. Or at least there. Um, I'm sure Chris is, is not just gonna go ahead with it.
No.
There has to be planning, no matter what the state says. It's just that what the state says, there can be mask optional. We have the plan in place so that we can go. But you can't, I'm not sure that Chris was actually asking for a date. Because we don't know what the state's gonna say.
I think he is asking for a date and, and I would make a um amendment motion that we have it by. That Chris has a plan in place, you know, no later than the eleventh, based on what he finds out between now and then. And then if we need to have a special meeting after that to, to vote on, on his findings or whatever the AOS, uh. AOE says or CD says, says, I think we need to do that. I think. I'm, I'm just worried that we're putting this, we're punting this down the, down the road again and again and again and again. In finding excuses to delay it. If the AOS, if, if. Secretary French comes out tomorrow and says, no more masking. I don't think we have any um real authority. I think that authority, in a sense, has been revoked. From the boards and maybe even the superintendent to say, hey, we can enforce this now until we get a plan in place. I'm not saying that that's what they're going to do, but I think what's gonna happen is, it's like a snowstorm. There's a big storm, storm coming. Okay. What do you run out of? Bread and milk. Even though we may not get a foot of snow, that's perception by the folks who sending their kids to school is gonna be. That, well, Secretary French says we don't have to have our kids wear masks. My kid's not gonna wear a mask. Then they come to school and somebody says, hey. You need to put that mask back on because, because uh, whatever. I just, I, I see it being a, a conundrum. I would hope.
Mike, you're right, and I understand. And if he just wants a date when we want this done, this plan done. Then that's fine. You can say March eleventh or whatever. But um, I am totally against just this. As soon as the state says, uh, you can go mask optional, that we allow our schools. To just all of a sudden say, okay, we're mash, mask optional.
That's not my argument. That's not my argument. My argument is public perception that we don't have control over.
I know, but we have no control over that anyways. You listened tonight, you read all, you read all. Statements. Um, when someone says they're not gonna vote for a budget because of this, well, that's foolish. Because now you've just cut all the funding to education and to the cleaning aspects of the school, which is a huge part of this COVID thing. And, and I disagree with anybody, especially a board member, saying I would advise you to vote against it. Um, uh, uh, yeah, that's not a board member's option. You have prepared a budget to go forward to the citizens. You weren't elected to propose a budget to go before the citizens as long as we go mask optional. Or et cetera. I, I, I'm sorry, but that just irks me every time I hear someone say, vote against the budget.
All right. I wanna propose a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I like.
You wanna propose an amendment to the motion?
Correct.
Lisa, before, before the motion, I just want to clarify about the AOE. My understanding, my belief is that the AOE will probably not make a recommendation prior to March eighth. I think that's one of the reasons that they, there's been quiet this week is because they wanted to respect February break, coming back from schools. I do believe they're going to take this next week to really kind of assess, you know, kind of where, you know, case counts are at to see where things are going. And I would say that the, the earliest we might see a shift, whatever that shift may be. Uh, would probably be the eighth. That's just my, just in kind of looking at the way things have gone over the past two years. Um, but I don't think they would, you know, would do anything over the course of this week, just considering they want to at least get a week back and just kind of see. Um, if there is an increase in our, our case counts. But I just wanted to clarify that because I know that. Uh, you know, the, the other organizations might have more information, but. I, I, I don't expect the state to really, you know, to, to have any updates really till at least the eighth, till that Tuesday press conference. That's just my belief. I just want to clarify that, so.
Okay, so Mike, Mike wants to make an amendment to the.
Well, I was gonna ask Eric if he wants to amend his own motion. Instead of having three people involved in this, you wanna add the March eighth.
I could still make the motion, but it, I mean, he can, he can modify it after I make mine.
Well, there's a motion that is seconded on the floor.
Right.
So you can make, you know, an amendment to the motion, but you can't make a new motion to lie.
Right, no, Mi- Mike wants to make an amendment, so I'm fine with that.
Okay, I withdraw my second.
You can't do that. Once, once it's been seconded.
Oh, no, I can withdraw it if he's changing it. So I'm withdrawing my, my.
No, I'm not changing it, Lynette. I'm making a, a amendment to that motion. I'm not changing it if.
You seconded his motion, so he'll make an amendment and we'll vote on the amendment to.
Mike, just do it so we can get over this.
I'm trying. Um, I like to make a motion that we direct the superintendent to have a uh, a plan in place uh, or. Details of, of plan in place by the eleventh of March. And no later than the eleventh of March and to determine whether or not he needs to have a, whether we need to have a special meeting to. Um, review and possibly vote on those findings.
Okay, you said you wanna make a motion. You mean you wanna amend the present.
Right. So, so Mike has made an amendment to the motion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lisa. That's a completely different motion. I thought you just wanted to add. The date by the eleventh to the motion that was made.
Wheth- whether it's a date or specific, it's still the same.
Okay, so. The motion was to direct the superintendent to create a transition policy.
Plan.
Plan. To go mask op, to what, Eric?
For optional masking and COVID mitigation in schools. By, and then you can add by.
March eleventh. Okay? So Seth, are you speaking to the amendment, Seth? I can't hear you because you're muted.
Yeah, I have a question and discussion. I just, and I think Mike, I think it was clear from what Mike said. I just wanna know what March eleventh means.
That the plan will be in place by March 11th. The transition plan for mask optional and COVID mitigations would be in place for March 11th. So you can see what the plan was. If, say, on March 14th, we're going mask optional on by March 11th, on March 11th, you can see what the transition plan looks like.
So so there's going to be another opportunity for the board to review before it. We're not saying that it takes effect March 11. We're saying.
No, we're saying there'll be. This, this amendment to the motion says that there will be a transition plan for mask optional and COVID mitigation. Maybe I'm probably bumbling the whole motion Eric made, by March 11.
Right.
At that time, if at that time of March 11, if we haven't heard anything else from the state about a date going mask optional, we can then meet again. So that that plan would go out to board members to review.
Okay.
Okay, so there's an amendment to the motion. Is there a second to the amendment to the emotion?
I'll second. It's Amanda.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion to have the plan in place by March 11?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes on the amendment. So now the motion reads. Eric, do you want to read the motion?
To direct the superintendent to create a transition, transition plan for optional masking and COVID mitigation in schools by March 11.
Okay. Is there any more, Amanda?
I'm sorry. Chris, the question was for you. I'm just wondering if you are looking for anything from us as far as what to be included in that plan, or if you're good to go.
We're, we are good to go. We understand what needs to be in this plan. So we've been, I'll work with the the admin and staff and and the school nurses, as we've done the past two years. So we'll we'll have a good plan in place. If there are concerns, we'll reach out. Thank you for asking.
All right. Is there any more discussion to the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I just, I wanted to just make one more point about what I brought up earlier with, you know, the the families who want to continue to be masked, and then I'll shut up about it. But you know, basically, you know, we've heard and we've seen that there's been families that have pulled their kids from school because of the enforced masking policy. And and, you know, my concern is, you know, there could be the opposite effect where, you know, there may be families who don't feel that send their kids to school is safe because, you know, their, you know, thoughts that they want to, you know, keep their kids masked. And and, you know, essentially, you know, maybe those families pull their kids out of school. And if that's the case, you know, how are we, you know, looking after those students? So that's all I wanted to say.
And so I think that's part of the transition plan about saying, we have this time that we're talking about this, that people realize that, you know, the tide is turning and mask optional is coming. And I would think those parents with that high level of concern would be contacting their building administrator, or the superintendent, or the counselor, or the nurse, to see what their options are. And that was one of the things talking about, like, so you say you have a high school student that the parent now doesn't feel comfortable, maybe there they need to take their courses on VTVLC. So that would be part of that plan, setting them up, getting all their courses lined up, so that they could continue to have their classwork, and making sure that they have, you know, internet, laptop, whatever it is. So those are all pieces, in my opinion, maybe Chris can speak to this, of the transition plan.
No, Lisa, you're correct. That would be another aspect. As you develop a plan, this is something we've been doing for two years, with every shift, we're really looking at how best to support all students. And so this is part of that. We knew that as we, we, you know, we look at the shift to a mask optional policy, whether it be the 14th, or, you know, sometime thereafter. And I say that just because, you know, you know, there's no definite timeline, I guess, right now. So we have to make sure we're developing a plan to support our kids for this. So, and we will, we'll do that. We'll have something in place for them. So. But I also want, I also wanted to say that, you know, as we transition this spring, you know, we're also, we look at things will be, you know, looking at the fall as well, how best to support, because I think we will have to get to a point where, just as, you know, where there are a lot of people in fall who really wanted us to go back to hybrid, and we're pushing teachers and and administrators to go back to a hybrid model, that I think we, we really have to look at, you know, what return to school looks like and what, you know, school offer. I think that we've done a nice job. I think there are, there is this expectation of kind of a, an à la carte educational offering, which is not always the case. I think we just, and that's something which we is part of that transition, part of that shift, you know, you know, during this time, shifting to the endemic approach.
All right. Any more discussion around the motion? All right. I am going to call the question on the motion. Does anyone need the motion read one more time? You want to read it, Eric, just because it's been a couple minutes?
I can if you want.
Okay. Just so everyone's clear what we're voting on.
All right. The motion is to direct the superintendent to create a transition plan for optional masking and COVID mitigation in schools by March 11.
All right. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously.
Lisa, can I ask a point of clarification, please? So with this motion, well, I just want to make sure, because it just says I have a plan by the 11th. So I could sit there and say, by May 1. So I just want to clarify, the expectation of the board is March 14th is when that transition plan. So I just want, you know, that that date to be clarified for me, because right now, the plan just says I have a plan by 11th.
I don't think that they said a a a date. They said Seth's head is going to explode.
That would totally change my vote if we put a date for implementation on it.
So their, 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 the vote, their motion was simply to create a transition plan. They didn't like my motion of.
So I understand that. So we're just, we're creating a transition plan, then just to create a transition plan?
Correct.
Okay, that there's a lot of time and and effort, a lot of resources being put in just to, I mean, it's not just you do this in an hour. I mean, there's a lot. And I think my concern is just, you know, we put this plan in place, and then, like I said, then all of a sudden, we come back for the board. And I just, my concern is the fact that I think from a public standpoint is the lot, you know, a lot of individuals are gonna walk away uncertain, like, well, what did we just accomplish tonight for almost two and a half hours? And that we have just a, a, you know, a plan that basically, we talked for two and a half hours, and all it's going to be stating what was something I was going to do anyways, is develop a transition plan. I do think there really has to be a date we are looking at. And then we can, you know, you know, if, I'm just saying, that's just my perspective on things, that's whether it be, you know, mid-March. But I just feel that there'd be some, some families who are going to walk away tonight, saying, wait a minute. So we still have no idea either, A, we're going to continue with AOE and just until the AOE, or now we have a transition plan that we don't know when this transition plan is going to be put into place. That is my concern, is the fact that you're directing me, and then I'm going to have to try to answer phone calls from families who are going to be calling beginning tomorrow morning, asking about all this, and I'm not going to, so I think that's just my concern is the fact that if we're doing a transition plan, I mean, I really firmly that we need a date, you know, that we're we're shooting for. So it's like, if by the 11th, we'd be looking at the 14th, and then if the board would come back. So, and if the board doesn't feel comfortable, then I, like I said, I just, I think that's a separate thing. But I I just wanted to kind of clarify, because I just know the the time, the energy that's going to be, you know, placed on a lot of individuals, on our resources. And then I'm not quite certain what the the end result will be. I just want, you know, just some clarification as I move forward, because.
So everyone's just, just popped up for, I will say that my hope was that we are, we are going to say March 14, because that does give us time, putting the plan in place, seeing what happens when we come back from break, to see if numbers jump. But that, that, that was why I formed the motion the way I did. But we're gonna start and go with Eric.
I was just going to say that, I just, like I said earlier, that, you know, the inflammation of this plan is dependent on, you know, the recommendations of the Department of Health and AOE and/or, I guess, your discretion, you know, based off of what this board and other subsequent boards decided back in the fall.
So then, I just want to clarify then, so we're back to where we were at 6 o'clock, that I will, that we are going to currently continue to follow the AOE and Vermont Department of Health recommendations moving forward. So if the AOE Department of Health, say, you know, that, you know, two weeks from now, that we're going to continue asking until April, that we're going to continue to follow that. I just want to make, that's what it sounds like you're saying, Eric, I just want to clarify, because, like I said, I want to make sure, if I'm sure if I'm a little bit confused by this, I'm sure there are probably other members of the public here are confused as well. So I just want to make sure what the the expectation is, because developing an implement, implementation plan for going to a mask optional is a little bit different what you just said, than just basically just continue to follow the guidance of the AOE Department of Health, which is what we've been doing. So I just want to clarify that.
Well, you're, you're right and wrong, Chris. You're right that that's what we want you to do is have a plan. Right now, we're not going to go as we have been, because we want you to prepare with a plan. So that should it be March 15th, or 14th, or because you said by the 8th, they probably will make a decision. So it very well could go into effect on the 14th. But we can't really put a date on it, because we don't, we, because we are following the AOE in the state, we can't put a date on it, because we don't know, right now, they're saying 80%. So, and once you hit that threshold, you can go mask optional. They're not really giving us an option if we're following them to go mask optional now. But I I would feel a lot better knowing that whenever they choose to let us go mask optional, that we have a plan in place to do so.
Amanda?
This is just a question.
No more.
I'm not making a motion right now. But if I were to make a motion right now that said, we go mask optional as of March 8, and the AOE and the DOH do not say March 8. Way back in the fall, we made a plan saying we were following the AOE and DOH with Chris. Does that then come back to bite us if I put March 8 on a no mask plan? Because that's my fear with, that's why I was holding a date, because we said we were letting Chris follow the AOE and DOH. And I'm happy to take masks off today, but I'm just afraid that we've told families for so long that we were following the AOE and DOH, that if they don't say it on whatever date we say, then we've then gone against everything we followed. So that's my unclarity. Like, I'm, I'm happy with this any day. I'm happy with yesterday. But I, I'm just afraid that we've said we were following them, and now if they don't have a date at the same date as us, we have a whole crew knocking on our door. So I don't know.
Amanda, I agree with you, and I think that's the one, where I'm at, is regardless of, you know, at 5:30 at night, I mean, I was already thinking about a transition plan, whether it be the AOE Department of Health, we were already working on that. And so what, I don't necessarily know why we needed a motion then for doing something that we were already going to do. I mean, so I think it's so, I, I'm just confused by the motion that I'm just going to present a transition plan the 11th. But I said, I just, it's confusing to me where I said, I just, you know, what the, what the board really, it's over back to where we're at with AOE. I think all parents need to understand that tonight, that we are following, we're continuing following the recommendations of the AOE and Vermont Department of Health, that we will begin school on the 28th with masking required for all the staff and students. And then, you know, the board then would ask me just to bring it, have a plan by the 11th for if we go mask optional. I mean, whenever that.
I think what they're saying is, for when the AOE and the DOH says that we would go mask optional. Seth?
Yeah, I, I don't, I am not understanding why this is such a big conundrum, and why you're so confused by this, Chris, because this, what we're, what we're, I, 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 it's a miscommunication, it's a miscommunication making you feel that way. And I don't think you need to feel that way, because my understanding of of what the motion just was, is that, yes, you're going to do all that prep work, and probably in that prep work, you're going to have a date in there that you're also recommending. And then, on that next meeting, there's going to be a quick, you know, it's going to get reviewed, and that's when the decision would happen, as to what date it becomes effective. So, and, you know, the, the thing about it, just from my side, is that I voted on this specific motion, based on how it is. And if the motion then again changed, I don't even know how that works exactly, but then that's, it's a totally different perspective. If we're going to throw a date on it, you know, based on my earlier comments, it sounds like the board's still going to support something, probably. So it's probably not the end of the world, but it makes a big difference onto my personal vote. That's why I wanted to clarify it. But I also think that, you know, taking the pulse of the board members in the room here, I think everybody does probably want to, most people aside from me, do want a date that's sooner than later. And and I, I sort of anticipated that maybe that was going to be a recommendation that you even make. So if it's, you know, a week after that meeting, or, you know, ASAP that you put in there. Yeah, so I think, I, I, I don't know, I'm also trying to, to, to calm you down a little bit, because I don't think that the actual situation is as, as, as it's making you feel. If that, that wasn't clear, and that doesn't make sense.
Seth, I appreciate it. I don't want you to try to minimize this, you know, and whether it be, you know, this is something which we've been dealing with for two years. And I look at as we're, you know, the, my understanding that the purpose of this meeting was to, you know, you know, have the board understand, kind of see, you know, where the cream is at. What my, where I am at is, I said, the confusion was, was this motion necessary, because I already had the authority? You know, I mean, so I, that's what I'm, that's why I'm saying, Seth, is what was the motion really about? Because the board already gave me the authority back in August to do exactly what you just made a motion did tonight. So, and that's, that's, so that my, as we were discussing things, my understanding, or my, I thought we were towards was developing a mask optional policy by a certain date, and but that, and that's, the board doesn't want it to have happen, that's fine. But we're going back to then from August, where each of the boards then said, you know, when the boards had to, you know, choice under duty of care, either they themselves could handle COVID mitigation measures, or masking, or defer that authority to the superintendent. Boards gave that, you know, to defer to myself. What I guess where my confusion is, the fact that the motion that was made, basically, is just the same thing that I've been doing all along, is like, I, so I'm not quite understanding what the motion is. The motion was basically just stressing that what I was going to do anyways, you know, if we didn't even have this meeting, I would have a transition plan in place. All that we're asking now is another layer is the board wants to see this, and then potentially vote on this. I, you know, and that's, so that's where it's at. So, you know, that, that's where the confusion is, Seth. And so, you know, like you said, we'll have a plan, we'll have everything ready to go. But where I'm looking at, you know, just where we're at. So it just, you know, you know, that's, that's where we're at. That's what, you know, just want to clarify.
Christie, what would you like to add to this conversation?
Sorry, I don't know if it's my time to say it or not, because I will be implementing the plan, whatever the plan is. So what I'm gathering is, the board is saying to follow the AOE's recommendation, and there's not necessarily a reason to set a date, like, Chris doesn't have to set a date for a plan, because you guys are already saying, go with what the AOE is saying. So I guess having a set date of, you know, March 11th, or whatever, makes no sense. So I guess having a set date of um ma- you know, March eleventh or whatever makes no sense to me. Because if the A O E said, okay, April fifteenth, they're already setting the date for us. So to have Chris invest his time in the next week and a half to create a plan, that may not even be in effect until June first, I guess, doesn't really make sense. To me, and I I don't know, Chris, where you're coming from or not, but that's why I'm completely confused as to what. You guys are saying going forward, if you're sticking with the A O E and the A O E says April fifteenth, then April fifteenth is a date, right, is is. I guess that's.
Right, I I I think I I think the essence of the plan is like we spoke about before is to. Is for families that are struggling with going mask optional. Is for or even instructors perhaps that aren't going to feel comfortable. Maybe being in the building if everyone's unmasked, and I and I don't know, I'm just saying if that's a possibility. But having a plan in place for them to know what their options are, so I have a high school student hypothetically. That I don't want now to go to school because eighty percent of the school is going to be unmasked. But I want them because of their their immune compromise to be masked, then. I need to put a plan in place for when that happens that my child can, you know, take however they're gonna get their work. Do their courses or whatever, have that plan in place so that when. The A O E, the Department of Health, or whenever whoever decides to go mask optional. My child is ready to go, I'm not missing a beat, so I, to me, that's the essence of the plan, maybe I'm completely off the mark. But that's where I see the plan. Lynette.
Thank you, I've just got two quick things, number one, Chris, we're not stepping on your toes. I looked at this meeting as if or this motion as if we're supporting you. You're right, this really isn't necessary because we know you, we know you're gonna do your job, whatever. I just thought it would show the community that our board supports you. We trust you, you're gonna have a mitigation plan in in place for whenever we do choose to do it, and that's up to the A O E. Um and my second part of this is, I'm calling the motion, this is ridiculous.
We already vote, didn't we vote on it, we already voted on it.
There's no motion on the floor.
Oh, I didn't, I forgot, we've, that's how long it's been, I forgot we voted on it, so I I just don't think it's it's necessary to. The conversation, I mean, I just don't want Chris hurt, I'm just. Giving him backing for the public. To say the GURKsu board agrees with what he's doing and his plans in, you know, to go forward. Um that he very much knows what he's doing.
Amanda.
I'm sorry, so so if we make Chris go through all this work and give us a plan on the eleventh. And. We end up continuing to follow the A O E and D O H. On the eighth, what is our, what is our plan then if they come to Chris on the eighth and say, go maskless? Are we waiting until the eleventh to hear his plan or are we maskless on the eighth?
Well, it's just by the eleventh, that doesn't mean he's he's not gonna have it done until the eleventh. But um yeah, I mean, I understand.
I was just thinking in the future as far as planning our next special special meeting. For the sake of Chris and all the other admin and all their work, I mean, this could change a week before the eleventh and then. And then what, I I don't know, I. I know we already vote on voted on it, but the further discussion we have, I feel like if if we've already followed the A O E and the D O H and it changes. On the eighth, we still have three days to get there and. Do we wait those three days or do we give him the go ahead right now in a separate motion to say? Follow the A O E and D O H.
He has that authority to to do that. And I I don't think they're gonna say on the eighth, we're going mask optional, I think maybe, you know, like on the. Second, maybe they'll they would say, you know, I I think they're gonna give you five days or something at least. To to prepare, maybe not, I mean, they have done things before on a Friday night, made some. Wild and woolly decision, so I put nothing past them anymore, but um. The the essence of the authority that we've given to Chris is if the A O E and D O H say we're going mask optional. Then. That's when we're going mask optional, whatever that date is. Yay, nay, maybe, maybe I've been in the meeting too long.
So the date is then pointless again, because if it's before the date. Then the date doesn't. Am I wrong?
That the the motion was essentially with the date attached to reaffirm the authority that was given to Chris in the fall. To follow the Agency of Education and the Department of Health, because no date was attached to it. Of when GURKsu would go mask optional, so the essence of the motion was simply. Reaffirming the authority the board gave him to be responsible for all COVID mitigation. I don't know, I I don't know what else to say, I mean, if if.
I'll try my best to explain to families what what happened tonight and we're moving forward, so.
Thanks. I'd be certainly happy to make a motion that we go maskless by the fourteenth. But. There again, the intent in my mind was to say, okay, by the eleventh, we'll have a plan in place. Whether it's the fourteenth or the twenty seventh or whatever day, that that work has already been done. It shows the community that we're moving forward towards, in my view, um uh mask optional parent decided. That's the way I viewed this.
Right, did you wanna make a motion, Mike, or?
I'd be happy to make the motion, I don't know if I get a second or however people wanna vote on it, but I'd be happy to make a motion that says that. That uh that the plan that will be implemented by. The superintendent or the results of his data collection, however you want it to, you know, however you wanna put it together. By the eleventh could then be implemented with the intent to go uh mask optional on March fourteenth.
So Mike, the result of March eleventh would be implementation on the fourteenth is kind of the layman terms summary.
Yes.
Thank you.
I would second that as long as there's no repercussions with us leaving. Chris in charge following A O E and D O H, I'm, I just don't know legally. If since we've already said we're following A O E and D O H, if they haven't done that by the fourteenth, if that then bites us. If someone can clarify, if it doesn't, I will second the fourteenth.
Okay, that isn't what he's saying, he's saying we're gonna do it regardless.
And Chris, what what is your feeling on that? I- is there a repercussion?
Around mask optional?
By saying we're gonna take the data collected in the plan. From the eleventh and implement it on the fourteenth, even if the Agency of Education and the Department of Health have not chosen to go. Mask optional. Are are there, is there a negative repercussion to us because we have originally decided? We had originally said in the fall, we are following the A O E and the Department of Health.
The A O E has recently stated that these are just recommendations and schools and school districts can choose to follow them. Secretary French has walked these back, and I that's why he even sent a slide presentation where. He is giving school districts and S U's. Whipple room, whether to be either A, if they're at eighty percent, they can still. Continue to reinforce a a mandatory masking or uh or or the other uh other way, I think that's, I want to talk with our legal. Uh there's no case law, uh you know, one way or another. Um so I think it's is uncharted territory, but I think it's um a situation where uh. You know, like.
We see a neighboring S U doing that essentially.
Yes.
Eric.
Uh I I would say any motion like that um would just contradict what. Um motion we currently already have in effect. You know, as far as. You know, giving the superintendent authority um to. So, you know, I I think it would be. If it's done at at, you know, at the S U board, then uh you know. Other districts are probably going to. You know, might have issues around that as well, is my thought, so I mean, you know, to make a to make a motion. Say that we're gonna go. Mask optional on a certain date, you know, essentially just, you know. Means that um I I would just say that motion would be out of order. So if we're gonna follow Robert.
But why would it be out of order, that decision lies here with the S U board, it doesn't lie within. District boards, we made the decision originally at the S U, so. If suddenly district boards are going to start taking it upon themselves to make independent motions, I think that lies out of order.
Well, and and other district boards, I mean, could have done that this whole time, um you know, uh but uh. I I. I'm just making reference to if we're gonna follow Robert's rules and. Um to make a motion that, you know, contradicts a motion that's already in effect is out of order. So.
How how is it contradicting the motion though, the motion was to direct the superintendent to create. Um a plan.
No, Mike's motion.
Right.
Mike was talking about.
Yeah, but how is his motion contradictory to your motion, is that what you're saying?
No, no.
Contradictory to what, the motion in the fall to follow the A O E?
Yes.
Okay, but Chris just said that the that the A O E and the Department of Health have now changed their their wording. They've walked back what they've said, they they're simply saying it's recommendation to be making locally. So we're, that's what our superintendent is telling us that. The parameters that were there in the fall when we gave him the direction. And the responsibility, those parameters have now changed. Within those uh within those agencies by the the people that are ahead of those agencies, by Secretary French. By Dr. Levine, that they're changing the verbiage about what that authority means, so.
That was Secretary French on February fifteenth, it was not the Department of Health who made that statement about, so I just wanna clarify that.
All right.
That's just my interpretation of 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 how this can go, so.
So there's a motion on the floor with the second, Lynette.
I'm sorry, I didn't, oh, Amanda did, um no, I, this new motion is. Just the opposite of what we just said, we reaffirm that Chris is gonna. Do what he's been doing, he's gonna do the plan, he will come up with the date depending on what is happening with the A O E. Mike's motion takes it back out of his hands and we're just going to go ahead and do whatever we want. Um so no, I I think that is totally out of order, um we just reaffirmed that Chris has. The S U's. Um the issue uh uh said we were going to follow the A O E and and that's what we had charged Chris to do. Now this one takes it out of his hand and gives an arbitrary date, um so no, I would never vote on this one.
Michael.
In defense of the motion. Lisa put up a graphic that said sixty one percent of folks who took the survey. Wanted no masking with no qualifications. Sixty one percent. Forty seven percent of the staff want that. And so it means they want it, they want it now, so I think the, in in my view, the reason for the meeting tonight was. To hear people's input, to collect data and have discussion about it. I think those who attended tonight were looking for, what are we going to do? I think the conundrum that Chris is in is not different, any really any different than the conundrum I was in before we had the first vote was. Why are we doing this if we're just gonna have to sit around and wait, my understanding was, is that. Chris in his mind is thinking about putting together a mitigation plan. Okay, that's great, we need that, we're gonna need it whether it's on the fourteenth or some other time, so. You know, I'm going back to the data that that Lisa put up, that people are tired of the mask, they want us to say, okay. We support your choice as a parent. As to whether or not they need to wear a mask or not, and as an S U, we will support um. Not requiring masks anymore, I think that's really the basis of what the whole meeting was about.
Calling the motion.
Well, I'm gonna let Amanda speak to it because she she had her hand raised, so Amanda.
I was just going to say, um to kind of bounce off what Eric said as far as going against what we said in August. In August, it it was different, I think for two years, Chris and everybody else has been hearing. Required and recommended, and I think that when we hear recommended, not only does the public hear that as not a requirement. But a recommendation, and I don't think we're going against Chris by saying. The fourteenth, I think if anything, we're helping him and we're backing him for him to accept that recommendation, that's not a requirement. To go mask optional, so that's all I wanted to add, was just that it's it's recommended, it's not required right now, so I don't think we're in any danger. As far as going against that initial motion, but. Chris, if you think I'm wrong, please correct me, that's just my interpretation.
Lisa, if I could, Robert rules, once somebody moves a motion, you've got to stop all the discussion and call the motion.
I I understand that Lynette, but when we're virtual like this, it's really difficult when people have been waiting.
I know, but we're sounding like Rutland City. And we're going on and on and and we really are, and we still have, well, right now forty two people listening. I just, we have to make a, we're saying the same things over and over. So.
So the motion on the floor is to use the data collected and. Put into the transition plan by March eleventh and implement that into mask optional. By March, on March fourteenth, is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
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 Motion fails. All right, I I I have to concur with Chris, I don't know what the purpose of the meeting was tonight.
To listen to the public.
No, we did a survey and we took the data. And we were supposed to be listening to that, so if there's nothing else, uh. A motion would be in order for adjournment.
I'm sorry, real quick, are we scheduling a special meeting for the eleventh then to go over the plan?
Not that I have heard. Leslie Br- Br- Bradley.
So this is Kevin Bradley, um Leslie's husband, and I've been, we've both been listening through this whole debate. And the 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 point I wanna make is that you said you have sixty one percent of your of your. Surveys that were returned, but how many, what is that percentage of the actual parents? Related to the sixty one percent? So how many parents responded, you gave, you gave parents two and a half days before most people left for vacation or went on vacation. To make a decision and send you back data, there was not nearly enough time to get data. And collect data that was accurate and and represented your constituents. And I I it it there was not enough time, and this is what I've seen over and over from this this. Superintendent, excuse me, Chris, but.
Don't excuse yourself.
Not a proactive approach to solving this problem. And what their, your board members are telling you is you need a proactive approach, put a plan in place. And they, and have it ready.
So Kevin, can I ask you, what is your uh stance on masking, please, I'd like to hear that.
So my stance is that I have a son who has some issues and I don't wanna see masking go away at this point. Because of, because there are other people, again, I work in a bit. Masking is required for those who are not vaccinated. So again, variety of different things, look at the public and look at what's happening in the public sectors. You cannot give people two days to complete a survey and then use data. And try to persuade somebody on that, on that data.
So Kevin, I I just wanna clarify, I don't think we were trying to persuade anyone, so I I just wanna clarify that.
You're using data and you're using numbers, you're using data that says sixty one percent of the people who responded. Wanted to go away from masking, how many of those sixty one percent? were of your whole student body and their, and their representation?
We, we don't have the total.
Well, then that's a problem.
Kevin, I understand, Kevin, you're right. I understand. This was, you know, I said Slate Valley. When we're through, we, we reached out to try to get some feedback from, from, uh, staff and from families. Uh, many people were appreciative of the fact they had opportunity to respond. Many people chose to email. Uh, we understand it is in a truncated, uh, time schedule. We understand that, Kevin. So I don't, I don't understand the, that we're not being proactive. I think one of the things is this is a, you know, a, a situation where you can only be as proactive as you can be with this. And so I think as we're looking at making this shift, I think what I was looking for tonight was not any, you know, a recommendation. I came into this night to, you know, understanding that our guidance is going to be to follow the AOE Department of Health. The board had asked me, you know, for a special meeting to hear this. My, my concern with this was the fact that for, you know, we, we've heard the individuals, but we're back to where we were square one. And I'm okay with that because that's what I've been doing for two years. But, all right, so I understand, I understand it, Kevin. So I, and so we, we'll put together a plan. And I understand that the plan will, will not, you know, uh, you know, please everyone, but that's what we'll move forward. So and I, I do thank you for, you know, your feedback and, you know, understand that we weren't proactive enough, but you know, except that's something we'll, we'll work towards. Thank you.
All right, a motion would be in order to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
If anyone's opposed there. All right, we will see you all at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Chris.